Good morning. Happy Star Wars Day. May the fourth be with you. At this time, it's 10 o'clock, so I'll call to order the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 4th, 2023. I would ask you to all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led this morning by Clerk-Treasurer Amy Bergens.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, in accordance with Nevada Revised Statutes 2.41.015, Commissioner Hales will be participating in a remote capacity today. That is guaranteed, that right is guaranteed by Nevada Revised Statutes. So, just wanted to inform the public of that. The other four commissioners are here in chambers. Depending upon how we proceed through the agenda today, we'll make a determination on taking a lunch break, but I would imagine, based on what I can see, we'll probably be doing that. So, at this time, public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the Board Chairperson. The Board of County Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and a yellow light, which indicates you have 30 seconds left, and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and, again, at closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, then we please ask you to provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. In addition to that, we will not be taking public comment on liquor board items, so if you wish to comment on those items, please do so during your opening public comments. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. We ask you to silence, please, your electronic devices here in chambers, so we don't interrupt anybody. We ask you to approach the podium, print your name, so that we have that clearly into the record, state your name, and your time will begin when you begin to speak. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. Good morning. I was here at a mission, or a committee, sorry, a meeting a couple times ago. Several things happened.
Mr. Jackson, I need, just because I stated your name, we need you to state your name.
Jim Jackson, sorry about that. Anyway, a couple of things happened at the meeting that I took concern with. One of them was Commissioner Tarkanian was chastised for asking hard questions. Keep asking the hard questions. That's what your jobs are. If it is embarrassing to the person out here, so be it. Your job is to get the information that you need to make the decisions that you need for all of the community, not just for an individual. Commissioner Oswald, sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. You also made a comment about developers in the valley. If they didn't want to play by the rules or by their negotiations, they could pick up their toys, go build their houses elsewhere. Keep that thought in mind. Be tough on these people. If they make a deal with the county, make them stick to it. I'll have more comments later on when this issue comes up. Basically, one of the presentations that was made on that issue, I thought, was very disrespectful to the committees, to the county commissioners, and to the citizens of the county. Basically, the person came in, said, "Here it is," goodbye, and walked out. Even made a comment from Commissioner Gardner, was, "Is that all?" If I had made a presentation like that when I worked at Walt Disney, I would have been fired on the spot and everything. That showed very much disrespect to everybody in the room and into the whole county. Anyway, keep that in mind. Your job is to get the answers you need. They didn't even give you a chance to ask questions and stuff. So, when it comes up again, make sure you get to questions that you want answered and that we want answered and everything. And I'll be back a little bit later on when the actual subject comes up. I won't take the time now.
Good morning, Ellie Waller. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I ditto what you just said. My first comment this morning is, I'm looking forward to Title 20 getting tightened up and also being held for accountability. I'm dealing with a realtor right now that approached one of my homeowners, had an illegal sign put up. I'm going to be embroiled with that person next week. I just got home from vacation. But there are rules for a reason, and just because you pay a property owner to put a sign up doesn't mean it makes it legal. And unfortunately, this person doesn't live in Douglas County, so I will explain how Title 20 works to them. Again, lots of these things are going on with signs in the county. We have illegal signs everywhere. There's a reason for the rules, and I hope that when enforced, code enforcement has more time, they can go about the county and have some of the signage removed. I'm not sure if you're going to, my second item, if you're going to have a discussion on the presentation first reading of VHR. If you're not going to take public comment, I would like you to have some open discussion about some of the new comments that have come forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia MoHuden. I live in Tahoe Village, and I'm here today to comment about the VHR, amongst the VHR ordinance. I assume you've all seen my email in the packet. I just want to reiterate for you in person that I would like, I've had a chance to review the ordinance again, and I'm respectfully requesting that you delete Section 3, that is part of the permit process ordinance subsection B, and then it goes down to 3, which says at the bottom of page 309, "Due to the high density and of timeshares and hotels in the Tahoe Village TRPA plan area, the amount of VHR permits within the Tahoe Village TRPA plan area shall not exceed 40% of the total number." This section completely disregards the quality of our neighborhood, of the full-time residents that actually live there. Some of us are owner-occupied, others of us are long-term renters. There are no hotels in Tahoe Village. There are timeshares. There aren't really restaurants or bars. It's not a commercial corridor. It is not the State Line Casino corridor. It is a neighborhood where people actually live. There are 1.6 parking spaces per unit in the Tahoe Village HOA. That does not support doubling the number of VHR permits in our area. It just doesn't. The math doesn't work. I do appreciate the way that the parking permit situation was drafted later on in the ordinance, in three minutes, I can't go into it. It was artfully drafted, but it's utterly detached from reality. There is no way to enforce this. There is no designated parking. There is not enough parking. It's all, it's where I live is primary, I live in a townhome, a fourplex, and I love it, by the way. It's lovely up there. But when someone parks, I don't know who they are or where they go. So, are you asking the neighbors, the residents, to stalk people when they park? There is no, there's just no enforcement. The only enforcement the HOA has right now is towing, which is virtually impossible during a snow event, which is when you need it the most. The Nevada state laws make towing off private property very difficult. There's a bunch of notices, it takes forever. There was an Audi in our area literally for a month. We finally got it towed. I believe it came from a VHR. I don't know for sure. And our roads are private, so Douglas County sheriffs won't do anything for us. If I call them up, we even had a car blocking Olympic Court and tramway. We called the Douglas County non-emergency, and they said, "Well, that's, is it on the public road, which is tramway, or the private road, which is Olympic?" And we were like, "It's kind of on both." And they finally came out and eventually, but there is just no enforcement. Until you can come up with an enforcement mechanism, I respectfully request that you withdraw this part of the ordinance and do a study and figure out how we can make this work for everyone. Thank you for your time today.
Good morning, Lauren Romaine. I am on the VHR Advisory Board. Hope everybody's doing well. In the last meeting that we had, when the tier structure was not accepted, kind of the discussion took a little bit of a turn and things got a little, in my opinion, a little muddy. When I went back and looked at the video, you guys accepted the 10s for property managers. So, 10s and above now have property managers. You did not accept it for something else, but in the conversation where we talked about sufficiently far, you wanted the sufficiently far verbiage. It worked for Mr. Rice's neighborhood, where now it's not a party house anymore. And the VHR Board recommended that we add sufficiently far to 10s. And when I listened to the video, there was never a discussion about what number your sufficiently far verbiage went to, and I'd like to see if we can get some clarification on that. And two other quick things. There's a thing now that with 29 days, I'm not sure that the ordinance really closes the loophole that we should, and this has just recently come up, and I don't know if Mr. Ames feels that there's some verbiage he can add to close that loophole. And then clarity also on if you're, if you are on violations, can you actually apply for the waitlist? There's some verbiage at the end for clarification about that, but it doesn't say whether you can actually apply to the waitlist or not, and I think with this opportunity to clarify those things, that would be wonderful.
Hello, my name is Kim McGary. I am back again. I was here two weeks ago regarding an issue we're having with flooding in our neighborhood. I'm back today because I'm really still not getting very many answers from the county. I want to start off by saying that, you know, as a Douglas County citizen, I've been a healthcare provider here for 23 years in the county, caring for the residents here at Carson Valley Medical Center and at State Line. I've held an oath to do ethical, what's right by our citizens, and I expect the county to do the same. I'm going to go ahead and share some information from that packet. It's from the drainage report that was done at the time. It does state, from this drainage report, from September 24th, 2001, that at the time, is this portion of the subject property, which they were going to subdivide, in a FEMA flood hazard zone, and the answer was yes. Here is a copy of the FEMA flood map that is in the packet. You can see that there was a flood zone that this intermittent stream is supposed to go to. You can see by this map, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, you can see by this map that that blue line was always within their subdivision. You can see that it says right here on the frontal drainage report that there are three existing intermittent streams that flow to the FEMA flood zone A. This is also in the document. Last night, I pulled off the USGS website a copy of how far back that blue line goes into the pine nuts. It collects water from three mountain ranges at 5,300 feet. My house would be the little tiny black dot down here. So, for the county to tell me that it's appropriate, that they're not going to do anything about redirecting this private drainage channel is unacceptable. I've been asking and asking. This is floodwater. We know in Douglas County we get flooded. We know that water runs from the pine nuts. We still have a lot of snow to melt. I put actually a code violation on the house that has no drainage, and our county engineers aren't even looking at their own paperwork, because the answer that I was able to receive publicly back was that Mr. Filippo said that the flood event had been unprecedented, and with it being an ephemeral stream, it could naturally travel its chosen path. Well, if our engineers were reading their paperwork and actually looking at their documents, they would know that that is incorrect. So, I'm asking again that the county stop dragging their feet. It has been six weeks that we have asked that you hold these owners accountable to putting their drainage back and having a drainage channel and not just having a sitting deck to the next time the water flows. It's unacceptable. They knew that there was a flood zone there when they subdivided this property. So, I don't understand why it is that we're being told by the county engineers that I was negligent. That came out of Jeremy Hutchins' mouth, that I was negligent, that I built at the bottom of a blue line stream.
Good morning again. Ian McGary, 25-year Navy veteran and eight-year Douglas County resident. Love this place. Way long before you guys were ever elected officials in this county, there was another Board of County Commissioners that I spoke about last meeting that approved a land division application, specifically LDA 01083, which was a tentative subdivision map allowing for the subdivision of 245 acres into 43 parcels for a neighborhood which would later be named Pinion Ridge subdivision. The county listed a number of conditions that had to be met prior to submitting that final map and package for county approval. Three existing intermittent stream beds were identified in the proposed subdivision, later called blue line streams in county documents. These were to be made into drainage easements and private drainage channels, which were to be perpetuated, maintained, and identified by drainage easements and deed restrictions. So, it was basically recognized that there are prominent intermittent streams on this subdivision, and that they had to do something with those waters. It's important that we call it an intermittent stream, because it's recognized that way in the drainage reports. That means a body of water, a temporary one, which has defined banks, as opposed to ephemeral stream, which does not, and can go anywhere. What makes me sad and kind of confused, really, is that there's been citizens from Pinion Ridge subdivision, we sent out a letter of notification to all those residents to have that drainage way right after the damage happened. And we actually had some people respond. Some people refused to take them, like, "I don't want to take that. I don't want to be responsible for anything." But there's others that actually wanted to do the right thing. And they called the county and spoke to folks like Jeremy Hutchins and their engineering and building department. They spoke to folks like Courtney Walker, who's a really nice lady, and is supposed to be your flood management person. And you know what they told them? Like, they said, "Hey, county, what should we do with this drainage way here? Are we supposed to be maintaining it? What are we supposed to be doing here?" And you know what they said? "Oh, no, 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 that's an ephemeral stream. Don't touch it. Don't do anything to it." They're literally telling them not to do anything to a previously established drainage path that is like known fact. It says in all the county documents that you're supposed to maintain this thing. If a curious citizen wanted us to go into our design manual and ask, "Well, what does maintaining a drainage ditch really mean?" Well, back in September 6, 2001, that version of the design manual, there's actually a lot of good information on how to maintain a ditch. That's since been pulled out. So, in the current version, which is June 15, 2017, that the county goes by, there's precious little, other than to say, "The individual property owner, homeowners association, or developer shall be responsible for maintenance of all privately-owned drainage facilities on their property, including but not limited to inlets, pipes, channels, and detention retention basins unless otherwise required or modified by separate agreement." And then, "Should the property owner or developer fail to adequately maintain said facilities, Douglas County can go on inspect and fix it at the cost of the owner." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGary.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Connolly, and I live in the Sheep Camp area, and I've been around in the area for about 57 years, and that's Lake Tahoe and Douglas County Valley here. All I'm asking is for somebody to listen to us, okay? I'm 74 years old. I live alone, and about two and a half, three weeks ago, I almost lost my property. My oldest son, my son-in-law, they happened to be close by, so they came and helped me save my house. The river was coming into my front door, and I even, I had some health issues because of it. I was out there working my butt off trying to save my property. But we did save my house. My property got destroyed. I'm working on restoring it right now. And the question I have is, you know, I know the county probably has some of your ears, and you're listening to them, and they're telling you what's going on. There's nothing they can do about it. Okay, that's fine. But I'd like to have some of your ears, too, and hopefully I have it today. And they're probably telling you it was an epic storm. That's why it happened. They're probably telling you, "Well, the blue line moved, and so they're in a flood area now." Okay? Hey, yeah, you know why the blue line moved? Because they didn't follow the codes. This is, in 2003, there was a final subdivision map that was finalized for them to manage the drainage channel forever, not for 30 years, not for 100 years, forever. And that document supersedes anything that was written after that. It supersedes CCNR. It supersedes anything. And it always go back, because there is a case over there on 88th, the rancher had those hundreds of acres, and he wanted to subdivision 20-acre parcels, and the county told him, "Yeah, go right ahead. You can do that." He did it, sold it, closed escrow. The guy is not building. You can go fly a kite on that property now, I guess. But it's, because of that document, in the original deed, which was, I think it was like 100 years old or something, that set precedence over everything, anything that came after that, and they cannot be developed there. It's open ranch. So, I know our case isn't really like that, but it is a fact that a document is a document, and it's been approved by your engineering department, county's engineering department. Is that my bell? Am I done? Okay.
Yes.
All right. I'll be talking to you later.
Jason Gibson, House of Gibson, mission statement reads, "A community to match the scenery." It was about four years ago. Such a profoundly deep mission statement. You must have really put some heart and soul and dug deep on that one. We got here a newsletter that goes back to January 28th. This is regards to Patrick Kate's State of the County address, written by Daniel Tarkanian. Demographics, 49,488 per 2020 consensus, 5.3% growth since 2010. Statewide growth, 15%. Aging older than 65, Douglas County's peaking out, 26.4%. The national average is 15.2%. Retired or retiring soon, older than 60, Douglas County is peaking out at almost 40%. National average is 22.3%. Children's school population decline 194% in the last 12 years. They're destroying our youth. We have one of the highest suicide rates in this country, the state of Nevada. The state of Nevada incarcerates more people than all NATO countries, and they want to build a new jail. And today, they're not taking the public input on the five new liquor licenses, because they're all banking a pretty penny off these liquor establishments. And Tarkanian, who's supposed to be representing the ranches, we tried to bring it to him, that they're going to put a fourth liquor store in within a stone's throw of the other three. They've had nine deaths with the local pub related to liquor at those bars. We got garbage from one end of the neighborhood to the next, and they're going to install a fourth liquor store for 3,500 people in the ranches, and that's why they don't want the input today, because Gardnerville, Mark Gardner, and his business partner, Dan Coverley, are getting filthy rich on the DUI business in this county. It's the number-one cash cow of Douglas County sheriffs. Douglas County revenues, property taxes are up 19%, room taxes 49%, taxable sales 35%. You think there's any money for the people, for these flood situations, for these emergencies? Hell, no. American Rescue Funds, it's all going into their pockets, into giving everybody a raise, everybody getting rich, 7% to 9% inflation raise, technology, new buildings. Our roads are in complete disrepair, and they want 50 million, at least 50 million, upwards of 70 million for a new jail facility for a retirement community. You should all be alarmed about the way these people are doing business. Who are these people? We don't know, because they don't have much of a profile. They don't have much of a background. How a Californian can come out of California as a restaurant entrepreneur and run Douglas County into the ground is beyond me. There's much more here to be said, but we're going to leave it there.
Thank you. Do we have additional public comment? Since no additional public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. At this time, we'll go into the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad to approve the agenda as presented. Since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 5 to 0. Go into the approval of the previous minutes for possible action. Discussion to approve the draft minutes of March 28, 29, and 30, 2023. Special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. Entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Rice to approve the draft minutes of March 28, 29, and 30, 2023. Special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. Since no further discussion, I don't, those are all budget meetings, so I don't think we want to beat that up again. So, since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 5 to 0. So, at this time, we'll recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board, of which this board sits on, with the addition of our sheriff, Dan Coverley. So, we have six votes available on this. Call forward Captain Duffy for the presentation of the liquor board items. Item 1, for possible action, discussion to approve the packaged liquor retail, packaged retail liquor license for K&amp;J Stores LLC, DBA, Sierra Market Number 2, represented by owner and manager Jess Winder-Core. And Jess Winder-Core has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. K&amp;J Stores LLC, DBA, Sierra Market Number 2 is located at 795 Tillman Lane, Gardnerville, Nevada, 89460. Any questions, Commissioner?
What authority does a county commission have in dictating where liquor licenses are located?
Could you repeat that? Sorry.
What authority does a county commission have in dictating where the liquor licenses are located?
I'm not sure how to answer that.
Do we have any authority besides zoning?
Yes, you have authority. We do the background checks and make sure.
Commissioner Tarkanian, we need your mic on. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's that?
We just need your mic on, that's all. We didn't have your mic on for a second there.
No, I just was asking, I understand these motions we're hearing now are based upon your investigation of the backgrounds of each of the applicants, and that's strictly limited to that issue, correct?
Correct.
It's not, it's not in addition to determining, in your opinion, whether this is a good place to have a liquor license or not, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the public is completely versed on that. What we're approving is the background checks for the individuals who have applied for liquor licenses, not the actual locations of the liquor stores throughout the county.
That's correct.
Okay. So, okay, any further questions? Since no, I'll entertain a motion.
Objection. As a franchise.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the packaged retail liquor license for K&amp;J Stores as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to approve the packaged retail liquor license for K&amp;J Stores LLC as presented. Since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 5 to 0. We'll go to item number 2. For possible action, discussion to approve the onsite retail unrestricted liquor license and entertainment endorsement for Ship's Barber LLC, DBA, Noel's Coffee and Apothecary, represented by owner Edward Kennedy. Edward Kennedy has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Noel's Coffee and Apothecary is located at 27-31 Highway 50, Unit 102, State Line, Nevada, 89449. at 27-31 Highway 50, Unit 102, State Line, Nevada, 89449. Captain Duffy.
Captain Joe Duffy, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff's Office has no objection to this application.
Any questions, commissioners? Since no further questions, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I request to approve the onsite retail unrestricted liquor license and entertainment endorsement for Ship's Barber LLC, doing business as Noel's Coffee and Apothecary, represented by owner Edward Kennedy, as written.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to approve the onsite retail unrestricted liquor license and entertainment endorsement for Ship's Barber LLC, DBA Noel's Coffee and Apothecary, represented by owner Edward Kennedy, as presented. Since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. I'm sorry, Sheriff Dan, I failed to mention that. That was six to oh on the previous vote, so, thank you. So we'll go into item number three for possible action discussion to approve the addition of Connie Cummins to the existing packaged retail liquor license for Rayleigh's, DBA Rayleigh's Number 109. Connie Cummins has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Rayleigh's 109 is located at 1363 Highway 395 North, Gardnerville, Nevada, 89410. Captain Duffy.
Captain Joe Duffy, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office has no objection to this liquor license application.
Any questions, commissioners? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the addition of Connie Cummings to the existing packaged retail liquor license at Rayleigh's, doing business as Rayleigh's 109.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad to approve the addition of Connie Cummings to the existing packaged retail liquor license for Rayleigh's, DBA Rayleigh's Number 109. Connie Cummins has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Before we go, take that vote, Captain Duffy. Whenever we have a change of management of one of our, that's what, that's basically is what this is entailing, is we have a change of management. And so that's adding that to that.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so no other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved six to zero. Didn't forget you this time. And item four, for possible action discussion to approve the addition of David Granish and Mary Wells to the existing unrestricted fraternal organization liquor license for the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, DBA Tahoe Douglas Elks Lodge, Number 2670. Once again, this is being presented by Captain Duffy.
Captain Joe Duffy, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office has no objection to this liquor license.
Thank you. I will, in your order of full disclosure, I am a member of the Elks Lodge as Sheriff Coverly also, and Ms. Bergens. And so, and I know both of these individuals, but it would not affect my ability to vote in a proper manner in this case. So do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the addition of David Granish and Mary Wells to the existing unrestricted fraternal order of, unrestricted fraternal order liquor license for the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, which I was a member of once.
I'll second.
Okay, so Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Rice to approve the addition of David Granish and Mary Wells to the existing unrestricted fraternal organization liquor license for the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks, DBA Tahoe Douglas Elks Lodge, Number 2670. Since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Once again, passes six to zero. And the last item, number five, for possible action discussion to approve the addition of general manager and master distiller John David Jeffrey to the existing intoxicating liquor producer liquor license for CPB Holdings LTD, DBA Bentley Heritage. John David Jeffrey has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. CB, CPB Holdings LTD, DBA Bentley Heritage is located at 1711 Orbitway, Mendon, Nevada, 89423. Captain Duffy.
Captain Joe Duffy, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office has no objection to this liquor license application.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? So I did ask a question earlier, so I'll ask that for the record again. Is this indicating that we have a sale? Or what's the process here? Because we're, I think our entire community is anxious for that property to reopen.
Yeah, I've been told that it's for sale. It's not reopening at the moment, but they need somebody with an active liquor license to be able to sell it.
Any other questions, commissioners? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the addition of general manager and master distiller, David, John David Jeffrey, to the existing intoxicating liquor producer liquor licenses for CPB Holdings Limited.
It's not just me. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to approve the addition of general manager and master distiller John David Jeffrey to the existing intoxicating liquor producer liquor license for CPB Holdings LTD, DBA Bentley Heritage, as presented. Since no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentations, Captain Duffy. And we will now adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. We'll go now into the consent calendar. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items A through G as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar items as presented, A through G.
Motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Rice to approve the consent calendar as presented, items A through G. Since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Commissioner Tarkanian has stepped away, so I don't have a vote for him, so we'll pass that on a four to zero vote. Is there a need to take a break? Is that what's being indicated here? He's not present right now, so. Sheriff is not on the consent calendar any longer. I made the mistake at the beginning, but not now, so anyways. Okay, so the consent calendar is approved as presented. We'll go into the administrative agenda. So we'll go into item number one, and I will come down forward to present that. Okay, so, and I think this is going to be hard for some of us to understand here, because I don't know that, can we take a vote here? Has winter finished? Have we stopped raining? Because we're in the process of declaring a proclamation, 2023P-031, as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month. But with the moisture that we've been receiving, it may come fast and furious later on in the year. But for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of proclamation, 2023P-031, proclaiming the month of May 2023 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month in Douglas County. And I would make an assumption that that happens every year in May, right? So, okay, we have a number of members of our fire department here to receive this proclamation. So I'll go through that and then make the presentation. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being, and whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition. And whereas residents need to work together to prepare their homes and communities to survive wildfire and commit to becoming, to become fire adapted. And whereas residents can save precious time in the evacuation by preparing a go-bag and family evacuation plan ahead of time. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners that May 2023 is the Nevada Wildfire Awareness Campaign, and this year's banner theme is Protect Our Home, Prepare for Wildfire in Douglas County, Nevada, adopted this fourth day of May 2023, Board of County Commissioners, signed by myself and attested to by our clerk treasurer, Amy Bergens. So we have our deputy chief, is that your title? Deputy Chief Amy Ray here to gather this along with her associates. So you want to come forward and accept this and maybe say a few words to the public? Okay, and I'm sorry, I'm remiss and I don't know your name.
No, that's okay. I am Christina Rustano. I am an extension specialist with UNR. And our program helps to organize this large inter-agency awareness and preparedness campaign. And so even though it's been a really wet winter and continues to be wet spring, it snowed at my house just about two days ago. We are expecting a significant amount of grass growth that will happen due to all of this rain and snow. And so it's really important this year to really be trying to take care of all of that cheat grass and the shrubs that will grow more this year that could potentially make the fall and winter and next year a really hazardous time for a lot of big giant wildfires. So we just urge everybody to be prepared for fire at all times. Things can burn in the spring, in the fall, even in the winter. So always be ready and available to leave your home and be actively working to prepare the landscape around your homes. You can go to livingwithfire.com to learn more information about how to prepare your home and your family for fire. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay.
Nobody else.
I could do a show and dance or.
Well, I do have tickets to Riverdance later on in the month, so anyways. Okay, well, thank you very much. And I guess photo op here. Yeah, it's move away from the photo. I only heard three clicks, and there's five of us. Okay, we'll go into item number two. For presentation only, ceremonial recognition of the Douglas County Community Services Department being named a finalist for the 25th Annual Cashman Good Government Award, being presented by our community services manager, Scott Morgan. Did I get that title right? I, the man of everything, so.
Thank you, Chairman. Scott Morgan, Community Services Director. You're the chairman, you can call me whatever you wish. So I'm here to recognize some folks that were part of a statewide award that Douglas County and my department was recognized for this year called the Cashman Good Government Award, which is issued by the Nevada Taxpayers Association. And Douglas County had been recognized twice prior. The Finance Department actually won the statewide award. And my department was recognized back in 1996 or '97 for some innovative programs. And so this is basically a program award that we got recognized for. And so we're going to recognize people that typically don't get recognized. We talk a lot about some of the accomplishments the department has, mainly the construction projects that we complete. And we recognize folks like Scott McCullough, who's in the audience, who's our project manager. And we talk a lot about how awesome our sheriff and our sheriff's department is in protecting our assets very, very well in our community. And truly, it is a team effort when it comes to putting these programs on. But there are some specific people that actually took a stand. There was a time when we were talking about doing things in Douglas County that were innovative, that were new. And sometimes those ideas fly like a lead balloon. And there was a lot of pressure. There was at times criticism. There was a time motion and passion. And there are people that stood up and said, no. We want to go forward with, we want to, we want to basically venture into what I call the great experiment. So we are calling some of those people out. But just to give you some background, why we got this award is we took an approach to address some of our long-term care needs in Douglas County. And as we all know, that's typically a very painful, guilt-ridden decision when you're talking about what to do with a loved one who needs additional medical attention. And our whole goal, not just the old senior center, not just social services, but the entire Community Services Department lives by some real simple philosophies. And one of the main one is keeping people independent, whether that's families with teens that want to give them alternatives to do things as a family or do things on a Friday night, rather, and go out in the pine nuts and celebrate. Give them options, family options, take personal responsibility for their lives. And the main one is keeping people in their own homes, keeping families together as long as we possibly can. And so with that, we did something that very few people have done across the country. This integrated services approach. And this is very tough to do. And it starts with wellness and socialization and goes, ah, the county's really investing in socialization. And I will tell you, we got heavily criticized at times for saying, that's really important. Having a reason to get up in the morning is incredibly important. Having a will to live and get up the next day because you have friends that you're going to meet at a location and you're going to do things together. And if you ever come into the community center parking lot between 10:00 and 1:00, kind of good luck. The biggest criticism we get right now is a lack of convenient parking because we are really full of people who are just getting together with others, making friends, building the community, making it stronger. And then it goes through a layered portion of making sure they have nutrition, making sure they can get to a doctor's appointment, making sure they can get groceries, making sure they can get independent. Transportation for those individuals that have lost it is freedom. And our approach has been to support those activities. And when you need a little extra hand, we send in a homemaker to do some light cleaning and maintain your independent living. And then kind of our next phase, which was new, was the adult daycare program. And right now, we're running between 23 and 24 clients in the program. Every single one of them are high risk of going into a nursing home. And of those people, about 90% would be what we call indigent or paid for by the state of Nevada or paid by our taxpayers in Douglas County. And that was kind of the final piece to what it equates to as long-term care savings. And our approach and what we got recognized for is really mind-blowing. Annual savings, $4 million. And this has been happening, not to the extent of $4 million, but between $2 and $3 and a half million over the last four years when we implemented some of these programs. And that's just the state of Nevada and Douglas County. Douglas County has one of the largest senior intense populations in the state of Nevada. You can see by those numbers that we have a large senior population. And yes, many of them are affluent, many of them are well-educated. But at some point in time, your healthcare expenses and long-term living expenses can outrun your money. And then at that point in time, they become indigent and are paid for by Douglas County, our taxpayers, and the state of Nevada. What the true achievement is, and I know that's difficult to read, but by comparison, Carson City spends $2.2 million on long-term care expenses. We cut our expenses in half last fiscal year. And our expenses last fiscal year were $238,000. The state of Nevada projects we should be spending 8% of our property taxes on. The state of Nevada projects we should be spending 8% of our property taxes on long-term care. That equates to over $2.2 million annually. That's an astounding number. We were actually shocked. We were trying to hold a half a million dollars in long-term care expenses just to get control of it because, as we all know, inflation has hit those labor-intensive programs and facilities the hardest. And so expenses are skyrocketing when it comes to long-term care. And so this is an accomplishment that that really my jaw hit the floor. Also, just to kind of announce, we are tracking monthly expenses in the current fiscal year, and it looks like we're going to hold that number if something else happens. And so just to do some other comparisons, this is a chart. Douglas County is the pink. This is what the state estimates we should be spending on long-term care. And you'll see what we actually spend in comparison to our neighbors is a fraction of that in pink at the very, very end. Quite an accomplishment. We're glad that the Taxpayers Association recognized our accomplishments. We won the category of population, school districts, and communities and governments under 400,000. And we thought we had a strong competition for the statewide award, but we did not receive that, but we still have much to celebrate. So there are many people to thank. Of course, our daily operations cannot go on without the County Board of Commissioners and your ongoing support. You just adopted our budget and supported those programs. So we want to recognize you and the previous boards, and thank you for that. We had previously recognized and memorialized by mural inside the community center for those that have been there. And I want to call out former Commissioners Kelly Kite, Mike Olson, Doug Johnson, Nancy McDermott, Greg Lynn, Lee Bonner, and Barry Penzel, who took the 21 votes over the period of time that it took to one build a building and support those programs. They were truly, we call them Commissioners of Courage because some of them lost their job because they supported some of these concepts. And so we are eternally thankful for them taking a taking a gamble on this department and some of its endeavors. And then there are those that put something on the line, that that had something at stake. And these are staff members and county employees that went to bat for this, took a risk, actually, and in some capacities, supported it even when it wasn't so pleasant at times to support these ideas. We all remember that at times these, there was much contention over what we had planned to do in Douglas County. And these are the folks that stuck by the department and held fast to the the goals that we had set to make a difference in our community, to make a difference in our state, and provide these programs. So with that, it is my pleasure and the chairman's pleasure to first recognize, and Brian is not here, I think he had a tea time, so we're not going to present his. He's my former Assistant Director and and stood beside me, stood behind me, stood behind this project the entire way. It literally was a labor of love for for myself and Brian of over 15 years to pull this thing off. I would also like to recommend or recognize my current assistant, Brooke Adie. Brooke, she's running the slide projector. We'll hold your applause till the very, very end and just just stand over here. We'd like to probably grab a picture here, Brooke. Thank you. I want to recognize Karen Beckenbauer, the the former community or Community Services, Social Services Manager. She really carried a lot of weight. We took probably most our criticism and most of our, I guess, threat to this program is what we wanted to do with social services, how we wanted to stretch the limits of the law to provide housing and keep people in their own homes as much as possible. And then the development of the adult daycare and the community center, moving the clinic over there, wouldn't have been able to do it without Karen. So you were instrumental in this whole thing, and you were a giant supporter and cheerleader. So thank you for all your help. Travis Lee, the former Community Services Manager. Travis was here in the beginning and haven't seen him for a while. So Travis, thanks for coming. And Travis was there not just to support the program, but Travis was there under building design, building development, and a great supporter when the some days the days were a little dark. Travis always had a positive attitude, and so I appreciate all that you've done, Travis. Cheryl Christian, the former Community Services Manager as well. Cheryl, thanks for coming here. Cheryl retired out of the department not too long ago. Cheryl was the piece that kind of, we had to put all these pieces together from the social aspect to the nutrition aspect. She oversaw the transit program. She oversaw many functions in the building, including senior services, meals on wheels. And she bought in, she got it, and she delivered. You know, it's easy to stand up and have ideas. You know, we all hate the idea guy. I was kind of that and the implementer. And but, you know, you can't implement everything, so you rely on people standing up here today to actually get the work done. Cheryl was one of those that actually got the work done. So thank you. Amanda Reed, the current Community Services Manager. Seems like we go through Community Services Managers there, but it's not that, we've had retirements. So Amanda, congratulations, the same words that I echoed about Cheryl delivering those services every day. You have done that. You've you've kept things flowing. You understand the purpose and our priorities of delivering those services, making sure people can get a job, making sure people can get food, making sure people don't go hungry, and making sure that building operates to to suit our families and our senior needs. The next one, and I'm not sure if Liz Baumgartner is here. She just recently, Liz?
Nope.
Nope, she is not here today. We, she was a question mark. Linda Skaggs. Now Linda Skaggs doesn't get up here very often, but we do want to talk about her because she's been our DART transportation supervisor for a very long time. And she got it from the beginning. And, you know, we talk a lot about adult daycare and food, but transportation is freedom. Transportation is getting a job, keeping a job, being able to then afford your own car payment, getting independent again. And so Linda not only runs a senior and disabled transit program for Douglas County, but she runs our public transportation, and she balances that perfectly. And, you know, sometimes, and I know you all hear, I only saw one person, you know, on that DART bus. Well, that's probably somebody going to kidney dialysis. And we try really hard to put two or three people when we have to make that trip into Reno or Carson City by helping coordinate schedules of doctor's appointments. But that's Linda, and those are life-saving, life-independent services that you provide. So thank you so much for that, Linda. Thank you for joining us in this award. Tammy McCombs is our Kitchen and Nutrition Supervisor, the Food Services Supervisor for Douglas County. She's been here a while. She's the one that cooks all the meals, handles our Meals on Wheels program. And part of the reason why, if you're hungry in Douglas County, it's by choice. Because we will make sure, it's one of our primary principles, that no one's going hungry unless you want to. And we have a food closet, we've got our nutrition program, we've got Meals on Wheels, and we've got social services that provide all those critical needs to our residents. And sure, we'll give you a helping hand, not a handout, and we'll try to do whatever we can to get you on your road to prosperity. Last but not least, is our Chief Civil Deputy District Attorney, Doug Ritchie. And I want to talk about them too as well. Is Zach here? Zach Waddell, is Zach here?
He's in court.
Oh, he is in court. So I'm going to have you accept his award. You know, we have the best district attorney's office in the state of Nevada. And again, you know, I even though I've been here 30 years, I have worked other places. And I've worked other places where the the legal counsel for your either your special district or the city, they work for the city manager. And so they are paid to give you the answers you want. It's not the case when you're in a county. You know, they they're an independent elected office, and at times that can be a little bit looming because, hey, will you help us out here? Yeah, no. Not in Douglas County. The the friendliest, nicest, toughest, smartest DA's that that we could ever get. And there are so many times that this whole thing, this whole program could have been washed out, could have went away, could have went a different direction if it were not for the help of Doug Ritchie and Zach Waddell, who sat there tireless and defended us, defended us against the state when inquiries would come in or questions are saying, you really shouldn't be doing that, helped us do innovative construction techniques that changed state law because of what we did in Douglas County. And it just can't happen without the DA's office, and of course, Mark Jackson can share in that because his support is is there every day. And but it just doesn't happen without you, Doug, and it doesn't happen without Zach as well. And so now's your chance to give a round of applause for some great people. Oh, Jeff?
Go, Bernie, Jeff, get up here.
You're Jeff's on the list. So sorry, Jeff Bonner's our finance guy. Now, and so a lot of these services, sorry, Jeff, thanks. Jeff Bonner is our Senior Budget Analyst. And so sorry, Jeff, you are key to the performance. You know, a lot of these services are run by grants. And we can't do it without not just spending the money, but getting the money and accounting for the money. And that's what Jeff does almost every day amongst other stuff in his our community. And Jeff gets our program. Jeff buys into our program. Jeff knows where we're going. Helps us to secure future grants and the previous grants to make their these programs and services run from trances to meals on wheels to the adult daycare to our clinic in the building. And it doesn't happen unless you got a guy with a pencil behind the scenes. We all know how important they are, and Jeff is is our guy for that. Thank you, Chairman. And sorry, Jeff, for for missing a guy on the list. So now I'd like everyone to please thank those folks that were so helpful in our community. So if we all pause for a quick picture, do we have somebody here to stamp a picture of us? Melissa is here, thank you. Well, we'll do a little short in front.
No, we'll have them in front.
Yep. Tammy's jumped in front.
Oh, yes.
People in front.
That was just a practice run, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the County Board of Commissioners for indulging that that award. Thank you. And take your box if you would like it.
I got two over here.
I got two.
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 Okay, before we get into the meat of the matter today, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break. So I think right now it's 11:02, so why don't we return at 11:10, okay? Okay, before we get into the meat of the matter today, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break. So I think right now it's 11:02, so why don't we return at 11:10, okay? Thank you. Mr. Ritchie.
If I could ask a question.
Sure.
Thanks. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Just so I'm clear, for 20.622.010B7, the offending language is "the nature of living in a neighborhood"? It's page 307 of the packet.
No, I'm not sure we're living in the neighborhood. It's in the terms in red where they added, the paragraph ended where it said, "It is the intent of the Lake Tahoe Vacation Home Rental Ordinance to make the transitory lodging activity permitted by this chapter resemble the existing residential uses made by the residents and owners and leases." Then in red, I assume that's the addition we're adding, in red they added this language, which was never discussed at our meeting, "in terms of occupancy, the number of vehicles, and the nature of a living neighborhood." Am I missing something, or is that not accurate?
Okay. Thanks. Doug Ritchie for the record. I see what you're saying. I think that sentence there was to clarify the preceding language. However, if you don't like that, we can take that out.
Oh, Mr. Ritchie, that's fine. This was an issue that I brought up at the meeting, and it's an issue that I think this board and the advisory board has failed to address when they've dealt with the VHRs in Glenbrook. And I brought this up. So you would think that if this item needed clarification, that this would have been noticed, posted, and discussed in an open meeting before its language was unilaterally inserted in there. I think it's pretty clear, resemble the existing neighborhood residential, existing residential uses would mean that if you don't have VHRs in an area, you wouldn't have VHRs next to it in the same gated community. But they changed that language now to try to say, oh, it only deals with occupancy, the number of vehicles, and the nature of a living neighborhood. That wasn't discussed by the board. We didn't approve that. Now, knowing this board, they probably will now, but I think that it should have been done the right way, where people, there could have been input, and it should have been sprung on us like this has before with my problem that I'd publicly discussed two years ago. These things, if you're going to change what the board stated in the meeting, it should have been, one, discussed in an open meeting and told to the board members. It shouldn't be put into a packet at the very end that makes a substantial difference, a significant difference.
Again, this is the first reading. This is a language. Again, it's my understanding this red line was in the packet at the meeting at the Hard Rock, the special meeting, this red line language that was there. If it's the board's will or any commissioner's will that it be taken out, we can do that. We are just draft, we are trying to take the information that's provided by the board and put it in red lines into the existing ordinance. If the language is incorrect, even down to a comma or a period, we're fine with that. We just need that direction, and we're happy to do that.
Listen, I understand, and this is going to be approved because three of the board members are going to approve anything that you guys suggested, VHRs. But that's not the point. Now, you're saying it was in the previous package. I don't know, we get so many different copies of them, and maybe it was somewhere in there, but it was never discussed nor approved by the board. I know that because I was there and I discussed it. So I just think if this was going to be inserted, it should have been inserted and discussed, and then the board could have voted like we did on every other provision of the changes that were made. But there was no vote on this provision as there were in all the others.
So Commissioner Turkenean, I think that this language was in the red line draft that we received on April 10th. I don't know that we specifically discussed this or removed it or left it. I don't know that we had a discussion in that regard, but I believe it was part of the red line copy that we got at that time. So I don't know that this is an addition by our deputy district attorney arbitrarily as we bring this forward. Is that correct?
I guess the question, the statement goes back to the same thing as I just stated, just before you came with that statement. Yes, it could have been in the red line, but it was not discussed nor approved by the board. So if it's not approved by the board at that meeting like the other ones are, then how do you insert it?
I don't know that we voted to strike it, is what I'm saying.
And vote to discuss it, so it shouldn't have been in there. It wasn't voted to approve it.
Can I speak up here?
That's a matter of semantics. Go ahead, Commissioner Hales.
Thank you. My understanding was that there were several changes recommended by the advisory board that we didn't discuss in detail. We looked at the big issues, and that took us a full day. And if, and my understanding is this is just deemed not one of the bigger issues to focus on. I don't think that anybody intended to pull a fast one. I think it just wasn't highlighted as one of the biggest issues. But certainly, we could discuss any of the changes. So that's, I just thought that might be helpful. That was my understanding.
I appreciate that, Ms. Hale, but this issue was discussed at the meeting. I brought it up myself. So all these other items that you say weren't discussed, it was because it was never discussed in the meeting. This specific section was discussed by me, and nothing was ever mentioned about it.
But we can certainly discuss it now, and we can certainly handle it now.
Yeah. Well, we can't now because it's not an action item, and we'd have to notice it, I would think, and you'd have to have a discussion on it. But again, it's the same, it's the same thing that happened two years ago. We add, stuff is added into the packet that has not been approved by the county commission, and you can apologize all you want for it, Ms. Hales, but it wasn't approved by it, and it was discussed in the meeting. If it was going to change, then somebody should have brought it up and asked for that to be changed.
Okay, thank you. So let me ask a question, clarify. This is a presentation-only item. We will not be making changes today. However, when this comes before us on June 1st, we will be discussing every red line item that is on this, in this agenda item in regarding ordinance 2023-1617. We will have an opportunity, this board will have an opportunity to make changes at that time. Now, if we do make changes and we amend the code at that time, we will have to then bring it back to this board for a presentation-only item and then go through the whole process again. It is not required, as I understand it, that we don't have to follow the processes that we previously followed in regards to taking it to the Vacation Home Advisory Board or to the Planning Commission. We can make those amendments and pass those amendments, but then it would still have to come back to us as a presentation-only item and then an action item subsequent, at a subsequent meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Ritchie?
Yes, Chairman, Doug Ritchie for the record, that is correct. When this item comes back, it'll be for possible action, and the board can make any changes, not only to the red line but to the black, in other words, any changes can be made. And then it would be republished, a first notice would be given out, published in the newspaper, and then there'd be a subsequent public hearing again on the revised language. And the board can do that until, the board can continue to do that until they feel there's a consensus on the language.
So any other questions or comments, commissioners? Commissioner Noah Sad, Commissioner Rice? Any additional comments, Commissioner Hales? Okay, I have no additional comments. So thank you very much, Mr. Stralo. We appreciate it, and we'll see you June 1st, right? Okay. We will go into item number four for possible action. This will allow for public comment, so I'll read the item into the agenda and then, or into the minutes, and then we'll have Ms. Kate Morales, our case manager, Kate Morales O'Neal. I think I got that wrong previously, right? I said O'Brien. I was in the right area. So for possible action, discussion on the adoption of ordinance 2023-1615, adopting an amendment to the Virginia Ranch specific plan, DA 04-1155, within the Gardner Ville Community Plan. The amendment includes removing reference to the 10.5-acre school site with public facility zoning without increasing the total approved 1,020 unit count, removing language stating parcels less than 60 feet wide must be rear-loaded, and adding a private street section development application, DP 22-0226. The subject parcels are located in the Gardner Ville Community Plan APNs 1220-03-000-034 and 1220-03-000-043, presented once again by case manager Kate Morales O'Neal. Morales, did I?
There you go. You got it. So, good morning. Thank you, Chairman Gardner. Good morning, commissioners and everyone in attendance today. We are discussing the Virginia Ranch specific plan. This is the actual location of the Virginia Ranch project location. It's just east of 395. I think the most common landmark would be Walmart, so behind Walmart, the large white area there you'll see is the current Walmart location. And so, oh, there we go, better lighting. So this is the actual amendment to the Virginia Ranch specific plan proposed today. The original approval for this specific plan was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in 2004. And I know it can be very confusing to the public, but we are not here today to propose approval of this project, including the number of housing units, et cetera, as again, it was already approved back in 2004. Today, the proposed amendment includes to remove the 10.5-acre school site without increasing that total approved housing unit count of 1,020. Also, to remove language which states parcels less than 60 feet wide must be rear-loaded, and lastly, to allow the use of a private street section with future land development applications. The Virginia Ranch original approval did include an elementary school site to be dedicated to the Douglas County School District. This slide includes the red line to the Virginia Ranch specific plan, removing that school site, again, without increasing density. The housing count will remain at 1,020 units. So last August, this is some just additional support here for removal of the school site. Last August, a representative of, for the owner of the property, asked the Douglas County School Board if they were still interested in a school site. A specific plan is a conceptual idea. Again, this was nearly 20 years ago that a school site at that time seemed like a really good idea. As I mentioned earlier, since the original approval was back in 2004, it's a relevant question for the owner to want to ask to the school district, it now being 2023. There has been a If it was going to change, then somebody should have brought it up and asked for that to be changed.
Okay. Thank you. So let me ask a question, clarify. This is a presentation-only item. We will not be making changes today. However, when this comes before us on June 1st, we will be discussing every red line item that is on this, in this agenda item in regarding Ordinance 2023-1617. We will have an opportunity, this board will have an opportunity to make changes at that time. Now, if we do make changes and we amend the code at that time, we will have to then bring it back to this board for a presentation-only item, and then go through the whole process again. It is not required, as I understand it, that we don't have to follow the processes that we previously followed in regards to taking it to the Vacation Home Advisory Board or to the Planning Commission. We can make those amendments and pass those amendments, but then it would still have to come back to us as a presentation-only item, and then an action item subsequent, at a subsequent meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Ritchie?
Yes, Chairman, Doug Ritchie, for the record, that is correct. When this item comes back, it'll be for possible action, and the board can make any changes, not only to the red line, but to the black. In other words, any changes can be made. And then it would be republished, a first notice would be given out, published in the newspaper, and then there'd be a subsequent public hearing again on the revised language. And the board can do that until, the board can continue to do that until they feel there's a consensus on the language.
So, any other questions or comments, commissioners? Commissioner Noah Sad, Commissioner Rice? Any additional comments, Commissioner Hales? Okay, I have no additional comments. So, thank you very much, Mr. Straylo, we appreciate it, and we'll see you June 1st, right? Okay. Okay. We will go into item number four for possible action. This will allow for public comment. So I'll read the item into the agenda, and then, or into the minutes, and then we'll have Ms. Kate Morales, our case manager, Kate Morales O'Neil. I think I got that wrong previously, right? I said O'Brien. I was in the right area. So, for possible action, discussion on the adoption of Ordinance 2023-1615, adopting an amendment to the Virginia Ranch specific plan, DA 04-1155, within the Gardner Ville community plan. The amendment includes removing reference to the 10.5 acre school site with public facility zoning without increasing the total approved 1,020 unit count, removing language stating parcels less than 60 feet wide must be reloaded, and adding a private street section development application, DP 22-0226. The subject parcels are located in the Gardner Ville community plan, APNs 1220-03-000-034 and 1220-03-000-043, presented once again by case manager Kate Morales O'Neil. Morales, did I?
There you go, you got it. So, good morning, thank you, Chairman Gardner. Good morning, commissioners and everyone in attendance today. We are discussing the Virginia Ranch specific plan. This is the actual location of the Virginia Ranch project location. It's just east of 395. I think the most common landmark would be Walmart, so behind Walmart, the large white area there, you'll see is the current Walmart location. And so, oh, there we go, better lighting. So, this is the actual amendment to the Virginia Ranch specific plan proposed today. The original approval for this specific plan was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in 2004. And I know it can be very confusing to the public, but we are not here today to propose approval of this project, including the number of housing units, et cetera, as again, it was already approved back in 2004. Today, the proposed amendment includes to remove the 10 and 1/2 acre school site without increasing that total approved housing unit count of 1,020. Also, to remove language which states parcels less than 60 feet wide must be reloaded, and lastly, to allow the use of a private street section with future land development applications. The Virginia Ranch original approval did include an elementary school site to be dedicated to the Douglas County School District. This slide includes the red line to the Virginia Ranch specific plan, removing that school site, again, without increasing density. The housing count will remain at 1,020 units. So, last August, this is some just additional support here for removal of the school site. Last August, a representative of, for the owner of the property, asked the Douglas County School Board if they were still interested in a school site. A specific plan is a conceptual idea. Again, this was nearly 20 years ago, that a school site at that time seemed like a really good idea. As I mentioned earlier, since the original approval was back in 2004, it's a relevant question for the owner to want to ask to the school district, it now being 2023. There has been a significant decline in student enrollment, and you can see this from this slide here, over the last 12 years, leaving our existing schools with a lot of empty seats. We can see that the removal of the school, the removal of the school site is supported due to over 1,000 students. I know it's kind of hard for everyone to see, but if you look from 2011 to today, over 1,000 students in enrollment decline. The school board determined they no longer needed a school site, and a letter from Keith Lewis, the Douglas County School Superintendent, to the owner's representative, Don Schmidt, supporting this notion, is in the supplemental packet you received yesterday on page 62, supporting that notion of not needing that school site anymore. The other additional amendment, again, is removing this, the language, removing that language, parcels less than 60 feet wide must be reloaded. This allows room for more open space and less impervious surfaces, which creates, as we know, more runoff. I will also point out something I learned with my discussions with engineering, is the term heat island. And this occurs basically when you have more impervious surfaces than your surroundings. Heat can be mitigated by tree cover and open space, which act as sources of shade and promote evaporative cooling. Lastly, like the previous slide, this would be the red line version to the specific plan, adding the street section, which are maintained by the developer or HOA. It prevents additional maintenance costs for the county and minimizes impact on taxpayers. As was noted in staff report, these private streets will need Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioner approval via future land development applications. These are the findings, I won't go through all of them, that staff believes have been met, and again, our staff responses are located on page 357 to 359 of the packet. In conclusion, staff believes the findings can be made in the affirmative for the requested amendment. Staff proposes, the Board of County Commissioners approve the following, to adopt Ordinance 2023-1615, adopting an amendment to the Virginia Ranch specific plan, and allow for the removal of the school site, removal of language regarding parcels less than 60 feet wide must be reloaded, and adding a private street section. Thank you so much for your time today, and I will field any questions, and yes, may the fourth be with you, as Yoda is portraying up there.
Mr. Ritchie, I do. So, we're going to ask the applicant if they have anything to add. So, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris Baker is here today?
Okay. So, okay, as we go through this, it's often easier for us as commissioners to ask specific questions as we go through this, if you don't mind, rather than wait until the end.
Yeah, I'll just go through real quick.
Is that, is that good, you guys? Okay. So, Commissioner Hales, you got that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just kind of jump through. Thank you, Chris Baker, Manhart Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant, for the record. I want to thank Kate for her presentation. We do have some redundant slides. I have my own individual PowerPoint here. I have a clarifying slide that I'd like to go through, and then just kind of give some of the justification behind some of the requests, so I'll be as quick as I can. Again, the requested amendment is threefold. The first is to remove the public facility school site from the Virginia Ranch specific plan without increasing the total approved unit count. What we have there is realistically just the modification of the land use exhibit, which is Exhibit 12, just replacing it, the existing exhibits there on the left, and the proposed exhibits on the right. I think this is kind of where most of the conversation since Planning Commission's been, so I wanted to add this slide. Just really what's led to the request for item A. A 10.5 acre elementary school site was identified during the original planning process of Virginia Ranch and was included in the 2004 approval. Again, 19 years later, the applicant is, as part of their due diligence, new property owner, went to the school district, and Douglas County School District has determined that the identified school site is no longer needed as part of their planning process, and therefore does not wish to enter into an agreement to acquire the site. I think it's very important to point out that at the August 9th Douglas County School District Board of Trustees meeting, it was agreed in concept that the Douglas County School District would receive eight residential units to help offset the housing shortage for its employees, and instructed the superintendent, in collaboration with district legal counsel, to secure an agreement to be brought back to the Board of Trustees for approval. So that's essentially why this request is being requested. As a result, the land use document, which is the approved specific plan, needs to be amended to remove the identified elementary school site from the land use plan.
Mr. Chair.
Again, this request does not increase the overall unit count in any manner.
Ken, I must be missing something in my packet, but I don't see the written contract providing eight homes to the school district as mentioned in number third dot below. Do you have a copy of that written contract?
The comment actually doesn't mention a written contract. It says to secure an agreement to be brought back to the Board of Trustees for approval. So on August 9th, it was requested that the superintendent with legal counsel work with the applicant to finalize that agreement. That is currently in process.
Okay, so you're asking the county to relinquish the property before any legal obligation is on your part to provide the eight homes. Am I understanding that correctly?
Not technically. There's actually, we're asking for the land use, which is identified in the specific plan, to be removed, and the basis for that is the school district does not wish to continue to go through the process to acquire the property. In turn, they'd prefer to...
Oh, you're trying to give an explanation in a roundabout way, but it's a very simple question, is, there was, 20 years ago, there was an agreement made for this development, and with this development, they would provide 10.5 acres for a school. That's a legal agreement, that's a binding offer consent, acceptance and consideration. So now, we have, so when you start talking about just change of land use, no, there's a written obligation on the developer's part to provide these 10.5 acres unless this county board agrees to amend it, and I think that's what we're here for. So my question to you is, according to what was written here, and according to what's in Mr. Lewis's letter to the school, to us in public comment, and in the letter to Don Schmidt, he says that they agreed to the concept to release the 10 acres in exchange for eight bedroom residential units. So my question is, are you legally bound to provide those eight units to the school district at this point? The answer's no, right? You want, I mean, you're him and her.
Are you asking questions for you to answer? Are you asking questions for me to answer?
But you're not answering, so, and you're just sitting there. I asked you if there was a legal document signed by both parties that you would provide the eight homes, and you said no. So I was asking the same question again, are you legally bound to do so? Obviously, the answer's no, at this point. Now, you can negotiate, but if we relinquish the property now, then what leverage does the school district have to get you to provide those eight homes? That's the question.
Okay. The specific plan earmarks the property from a land use perspective, right? That's what we're modifying today.
I think it says it's going to be dedicated.
Again, we're here to modify a land use document, okay? The basis for that request is the fact that the school district no longer wishes to acquire the property. In turn...
That's my problem, that's my problem, and you keep misrepresenting it, and county staff has not been clear on how she's representing it. Because that's what I've been told. The school district says they don't need the property, and there, that's it. But that's not in Mr. Lewis's letter to us, and it's not in Mrs. Lewis's letter to Don Schmidt. Who's Don Schmidt?
Don Schmidt represents the applicant.
Okay. So it's not in either one of the letters where they say, hey, we're going to give you the 10.5 acres, we don't want it. What it says is, we're going, and it says right here, has agreed in concept to release the 10 acres in exchange for eight bedroom, two bedroom residential units. There is a offer to give something back, and they're offered to get something in return. So, it's our obligation as a board to make sure they get what they are, been promised in return. In fact, I think you just stated there, and I assume this is the applicant who was making these representations, that there would be a negotiation to provide the eight homes at the school board meeting. So, you make that representation to the school board, the school board trustees vote for it, superintendent's in favor of it, but you haven't signed anything to legally bound you to do so. And that's the problem I have. I, listen, if the school doesn't, board doesn't feel they need it, and I have some concerns about that, and I'll get to that in a second, but if the school district, the current school board says, we don't want it, or we give Mr. Lewis the authority to give it back in exchange for the eight homes, that's fine, as long as they get the eight homes. But if they don't get the eight homes, then that's not what Mr. Lewis is writing in favor of, it's not what the school board voted in favor of. Okay? So that's my problem. Second of all, in last Board of County Commissioners meeting, we got a supplemental response from Jim Slate, and I asked Jim Slate if he had a copy of this letter, and he says, in this public response I was submitted to the county staff, that the previous superintendent in 2019 said that if Virginia Ranch developed their property, we would need another school. This is in 2019, and this is a previous superintendent. That was before Buckeye Ranch was approved, which is now, what, another 4,500 homes? So you have one superintendent just four years ago saying we need a home, and we have another one saying we're not, how do we really know what it's going to be like in 10 years? Right now, there is an obligation to provide the school site, and it's dedicated, it's not to be paid for, it's dedicated. Anybody in this room can use the word, what do you think dedicated means, and you can come to your own conclusion. Mr. Lewis is acting like he'd have to pay for it, and somebody gave him some bad advice. In fact, I spoke with our legal counsel earlier, and she doesn't believe it would have to be paid for. Dedication means dedication, give it away. So, you have a school board superintendent who's four years ago felt it's needed, and now we have one who doesn't feel it's needed, but said, hey, I'll take the eight homes instead, but you're not offering any of that. You're not offering the eight homes, and you're not offering the school.
Commissioner Noah Sad, you had a question or comment at this time?
Well, I know that zone PF, and I would, I would suggest, or I even think that the rezon change would be required, if you're going to build eight homes.
So, Mr. Forsberg is...
Yeah, my name's Mark Forsberg, I also represent the applicant. The applicant has committed to the school board to provide it eight homes. The school board has committed to the applicant to not require a school site. The school board has determined that they don't need the school site. There's a process for specifically a school site that's statutory. There may be disagreements about what it means, but there's a... Yeah, sure, I'm happy.
Were you the one that received, that, we received a letter from an attorney that represents them? Are you the gentleman that wrote that letter? So I can put the two and two together?
I did write a letter that's been submitted to you, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So, we are, the applicant is committed to the eight homes. It's committed it then, and I commit it now, as a matter of record, that the homes will be provided. The details of certain things haven't been worked out, I guess the school district probably has to figure out how they're going to utilize the homes and so forth too, but it is a commitment, it's an oral contract.
Could I ask you, if you really feel that way, then why did you put in your letter that it was unconstitutional for the school board or the county to require the eight homes? You said it was a violation of the Constitution, and they were under no obligation. So you write this in a letter that we get, that makes it very clear that you don't believe you have to provide the homes, but now you're using the basis of providing the homes to get the 10.5 acres released?
There are two different things. The statute discusses school sites, and there's a process that you follow. If the school district doesn't want the site, there's a process that's followed.
Okay, but you're talking about Nevada revised statute, and I talked with our legal counsel about that before I came here, because it was a little bit confusing to me. I'm saying, does Nevada revise, that's what I called you for yesterday, thank you for getting carried to call me. Does that, does that mean that the Nevada revised statute that talks about when a school site is needed, and what the developer has to do, can override what the county commission contractually obligates themselves and the developer with in a plan? And she said, no, it doesn't. So this Nevada revised statute doesn't override the fact that when this developer in 2004 made this agreement, they promised to give the 2.5, the 10.5 acres? It's not governed by the Nevada revised statute, which is what you very clearly stated in there, and our legal counsel doesn't agree with that.
Okay. I think we're having an argument in search of a disagreement here. We do not disagree that the developer is bound now, or after the school site is removed from the specific plan, to contribute eight completed homes to the school district, as was discussed with the school board. The school board decided that it did not want a school site. My letter says that you can't, that the county or anybody can't compel a developer in lieu of a school site to provide eight developed, completed homes, because that's not what the statute provides. So, I'm here to commit to you, I think to allay all these concerns once and for all, that the developer, the property owner, has committed to the school board to provide eight completed homes, and it will do so. It's on the record, it's on the record at the school board meeting, and now it's on the record as clearly as I can possibly state it today.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fors.
And I believe the school district is also satisfied with that representation.
Okay. Commissioner Noah Sad...
Sir, would you stand by for a minute, please? If the eight homes can be built, and we make a zone change to residential, who benefits from that? Who benefits from those eight houses going in there?
That's going to be up to the school district. They're going to be owned by the school district, and the school district will determine in its own way, whatever their processes are, who gets them and how they're to be used.
And, okay, so now, I think you're implying that the pay for teachers is quite low, and that they need to get a break on housing. Would you say that was right?
I'm not implying that at all. I'm conveying to you what the school district has conveyed to the developer.
All right. Now, the developer is going to put the houses in. Does the developer get benefit from that? Do they sell the houses?
If the school, so, just to go back to analogize this to the school site issue, the way the statute reads is that if the school district does not use the site after 10 years or construct a school, that they have to offer it back to the developer who can then repurchase it.
I guess my...
I don't know what the school district would intend to have happen at the end of this thing, but that's, it's, this is, we're giving something to the school district gratuitously.
This is the thing, you keep talking about the statute, this isn't governed by the statute, this is governed by, according to our legal counsel, this is governed by the agreement that was made in this plan, and it was going to be dedicated, it wasn't going to be purchased. So when you say we have a legal binding question, argument, I was going to ask this to Mr. Ritchie, but I'll ask you instead. How is it legally binding because of statements that were made at the school board meeting, or the statements that you're making here? When Commissioner Noah Sad just asked a good question, who's going to get the benefit from this? Are you giving those homes for free? Are you paying for the homes? Has this been negotiated, and, because you have to have the terms, the conditions?
We're providing, yes, we are. That's exactly what the words say. They're going to receive deeded, built homes.
You guys are arguing about dedication, and now you're saying received means that, okay.
Okay, so they'll be gifted to them, okay? That's the same thing, you analogized dedication to being a gift, it's a gift, that's what it is.
Okay, now... Okay, now, we give a gift to the teachers. Are there any other entities within Douglas County that also get, don't get paid quite as much as we think they should, and would also like to have those eight houses to live in, like Douglas County sheriffs, East Fork Fire?
I'm sure there are, but there's not.
What is, that is just going to do nothing but cause dissension. So my recommendation to this board is going to be, keep this thing zoned PF, do not allow anything to be built on there. Let's use it for a park, let's use it for a pickleball court. I think I hit a, I think I hit a sense of fabric there. All right. I'm being, I'm being, I'm being very serious.
I'm being serious, too.
There are other purposes.
I'm being serious, too, and I'd like to be able to respond to what you just said.
Okay, go ahead.
There is no statute in the NRS that provides anything similar to what NRS 278-345 talks about dedicating a school site. And this arrangement came, flowed from that statute, whether it's applicable now or not, we have agreed with the school district that because they didn't want the school site, in which case the developer would have no obligation whatsoever, that would be the end of it. If the school district didn't want the school site, there would be no obligation. You can't force somebody to take something they don't want. So they don't want it, they don't want to own it, they don't want to build a school there, they don't have enough students to put in it, whatever their reasons are, we accept that as their position on that, and we say, we will, in lieu of that, give you something else that is apparently desirable to them, because they agreed to it. So I don't understand where the dissension here is. We don't have an obligation to build a police station under any statute, or a sheriff's station, or a fire station. But we do have to approach the school district with that. And in fact, all of these other governmental entities that are within the county, the divisions, the departments, all review these plans and so forth. So if anybody had wanted such a thing, they would have certainly spoken up and asked for it.
Thank you for all that. Now, when Commissioner Tarkanian mentions the NRS doesn't govern here, supported by Assistant DA down the bench there, why do you keep referring to NRSSs? Why do you keep referring to an NRS as the okay to do what you're doing?
Because it's the NRS that provides, is the source of an obligation of the developer to give a benefit to the school district, or respond to a need of the school district. That's the source of it. If it weren't for the statute, we wouldn't be offering a school site at all, nor would we then later be offering something in lieu of it.
Now, that's just, that just isn't true.
It is true.
No, developers all the time give government agencies land for schools, land for fire stations, they don't follow the NRS and pay for those. They're dedicated to them. It's part of a give and take. When you change this rule, this zoning from residential, I mean, from agricultural to building what you wanted to build, you agree to give up this land, to dedicate this land. It has nothing to do with the NRS. I don't even think your 10 years are sure, but I haven't asked counsel about that.
Okay. We have any further questions for Mr. Forsberg?
This is, yes, I would just like to speak to this. I, too, would like to see housing for our other public servants, but that's not in front of us. What's in front of us is, I think, a creative way forward to address the real needs of the school district as they have determined them to be. And I appreciate the applicant working with them to come up with this, what I see as a generous idea, to help meet the real needs of the school district. I would like to have similar creative processes and discussions and maybe solutions for other public servants, and hopefully, in the near future, we'll start working on a strategic plan that will let us talk about those things. But just because we can't do this for all public servants doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it for some. And so I, for one, want to say thank you, and I feel that this is a good, a good way forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Are we ready to go to public comment?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
All right, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the question. Who decides what teachers go in there? How many teachers are in that school district?
So Commissioner Noah said, I think we're going a little bit off subject there, because...
No, we're not. No, we're not. Because this presents a problem for the school district if they want to plant people in there so they have a pecking order. So nobody's going to be satisfied.
The method of use by the school district on those eight homes is something that, should we approve this, they would have to determine what the processes are.
I am simply offering it as a possibility.
Yep.
Double stumbling block.
I don't, I, that, well noted, well noted. I concur with your feelings in that regard, okay? So. How many times are we going to, how many applicants are we going to hear from, Mr. Ritchie?
One more.
One more?
One more.
Okay. Because we'd like to go to public comment.
My name is Don Smith, and I kind of promise I quit doing these presentations about 20 years ago, but there's been some comments made. I want to be very clear about what we're doing with the school district. First, I have a little bit of history with Douglas County. I graduated from here in 1970. I've been in education almost my entire life. I worked with the Humboldt County School District for quite a while. His dad was one of my coaches. I know what the problems are with education. I can't speak about fire departments or police departments. We wanted to come up with something that was innovative and out of the box when we went to the, to the school district. They have problems. We talk about affordable housing. We don't have affordable housing. We have attainable housing. We're trying to bring some product with what we're bringing here. We knew that we had a 10.5 acre school site that was most likely, based on the statistics over the last 30 years in Douglas County and declining school enrollment, that we had a chance to not have a 10.5 acre weed patch in the middle of this subdivision for 10 years, or however long it would go. So we thought, we don't owe anything to the school district, but let's be a participant and work with the school district to try to solve one of their needs, which is to provide some housing for futures teachers to come here. I was very successful in doing this in Humboldt County, using federal government dollars, where we would get teachers for one or two years, and they would want to come to Douglas County or Washoe County. We came up with some very innovative ideas up there, and those teachers became principals, counselors, superintendents. So when we did this, there was no benefit to us to do this. It's part of trying to be a good developer, and not the one that most people think developers are just crooks. There's, there's no ulterior motive here. We want to give eight homes, free of charge, to the Douglas County School District so that they can recruit some teachers here. We're not going to have a weed patch for 10 years. That's the purpose of this. They agreed to it, we're going to move forward with it. Mr. Tarkanian.
That's my question. I just, you know, listen, what you talk about is great. I love your passion, I like your ideas. In fact, I agree a little bit with what Commissioner Hale says, but why hasn't an agreement been reached that's legally, that's legally binding? Come on up here and say...
Let me interrupt for a minute, because we've got to get through this step. We get through this, no, you think that's cute, and you think it's fun, yes, you're smiling and laughing at me, but I'm going to tell you...
Wait a minute. Time out.
Please don't interrupt.
Okay. Okay, we need to take a five-minute break here. We'll take a five-minute break to let everybody else's emotions calm down. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Okay, well, we ready to go back in the session? Okay, I think we've, Commissioner Tarkanian, you had a statement you wish to...
Okay, before we broke, there was a little heated discussion because I tried to explain what my laugh was when the gentleman got upset that I laughed. I laughed because as an attorney, when you give away any, the only leverage you have to enforce an agreement, you're not going to get the agreement done. And that's what the laugh is for. It has nothing to do with the proposal that was made. It's if we release a 10.5 acres before a legal bonding agreement for the eight homes is there, we have no leverage to enforce it.
Thank you. I think at this time, Ms. Gregory, did you have something to share? I would like to go to public comment when we can.
Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There has been many comments back and forth about the legalities. I will share that Mr. Forsberg and I disagree as to the applicability of the NRS with regards to the school district. He and I have disagreed many a time, as lawyers often do. I also want to say that with regards to this, the issue is framed by Mr. Tarkanian. And so I believe that the question for the applicant is, are they willing to add language with regards to the eight houses so that this project can move forward? Additionally, just for purposes of the record, I do think it would be helpful if we would ask the applicant if they're done with their presentation. I noticed that Chris did have a number of slides, and I'm not sure that he was able to make it all the way through.
Okay, Commissioners, we want to go through the rest of the slides, and we'll refrain asking questions until we hear a public comment. Sure, okay, I understand. Okay, Mr. Forsberg.
... applicant, and we are willing to have the language of the grant of the eight homes to the school district placed into the language of the specific plan. In, if...
I appreciate that, Mr. Forsberg, but we haven't had public comment. And I have things I wish to say, but I wish to listen, you know? Public comment, to me, is extremely important, okay? This is where the public has an opportunity to weigh in on the issues and potentially sway our vote one way or the other. So, you know, adding additional language or making additional concessions at this time is not part of this presentation. And so while I appreciate what you're, what you're suggesting that you want to do, I still, we need, we need to listen to the rest of the presentation. We need to go to public comment, and at which time I have some questions specifically, but I want to listen to what our public has to say about this project before I make my comments.
I completely agree, Commissioner.
Thank you. Is there, does the applicant have additional slides that they wanted to go through? We'll try to refrain from asking questions until we come back from public comment. Okay, thank you.
Again, Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. Again, this is a, this is a three-point request, right? Obviously, one of the, one of the topics has a little more input than the other two, but I think the other two are important. So I think going through those, bear with me as Kate kind of queues up the PowerPoint. So, so again, the second item requested in the amendment... Yeah, you can go ahead. Again, is to remove language. It states parcels less than 60 feet must be rear-loaded. Staff went through this. Essentially, here, it would require two street frontages for smaller lots, which heat islands were discussed. Really, the, the basis for this is it requires more impervious surface to serve smaller lots in this, in this statement. And obviously, there's long-term maintenance associated. And as Kate mentioned, heat island effects, usually more pavement is a bad thing, water recharge, things of that nature. So to us, this is, provides, you know, the opportunity for unique design solutions, which to us, this is kind of something that benefits the community as a whole by reducing the overall pavement. The third item, allow the use of a private street section with the approval of future plan development applications. This kind of is in concert with the, with the second item. Again, we're trying to reduce long-term maintenance associated with development, which is a lot of times put on the towns or the, or the county itself. This would be a smaller street section for smaller lots. Again, this would be private in nature and only utilized through the PD process, which would come back as part of the tentative maps, zone change, and PD overlay process, which would come in front of the planning commission and this board. But the intent is to reduce pavement section, reduce long-term maintenance, and provide more pervious surfaces opposed to impervious. Again, those are the three items. That, that concludes my presentation. We would agree with staff's recommendation, planning commission's recommendation for approval, and unavailable for any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, then, we're ready to go to public comment? Okay, let's go to public comment. Entertain public comment on item number four, discussion on the adoption of ordinance 2023-1615, adopting an amendment to the Virginia Ranch specific plan, DA 04-155.
I'm back. I've been listening to all the arguing going back and forth on this. I come down to a simple thing. They made a deal 20 years ago. Oh, Jim Jackson, sorry. Been here so often, I think you know me. They made an agreement 20 years ago. I think they should stick to it. Many of these developers come in, they make an agreement, and then somewhere along the line, they change it. Well, what's the reason they change it? They want to make more money. Now, maybe they've got some good reasons that they want to give some properties away, but why should the school board be investing in houses? Eight houses isn't going to solve their problem of homes for all the teachers in this valley and everything, where that land might. School board says, well, we don't need the school. You've got an area that's planned for 4,000 homes. You think you're not going to have more kids coming in? Let's say it's just one per house. That's 4,000 more kids coming in and everything. And there's probably going to be more than that, at least the way they're going to do it. Now, on this land, what are they going to do with the 10 acres? They're going to expand their properties into that, make them bigger properties so they can charge more money for them? Probably. They don't do anything for nothing. Giving the houses to the, I mean, it's a good idea. It, it sounds good, but it's not practical. The schools, eight, you're going to have more teachers arguing with each other and fighting over who's going to get those homes? And how is the school going to charge for them? They're going to rent them, or they're going to sell them? My recommendation is, is leave it the way it is. If there's some changes that they have to make, get the language in writing, get a contract set up for it, do all the legal stuff that you need to before you approve something. Every time I've seen something approved, before you get all that, it really gets screwed up in the end and stuff. So, you know, I was looking at it, the, the school has to, either has to be a school or nothing, because that's the way it's, the language is. But in 10 years, they might just need a school, and then they've got the land for it already. Otherwise, they're going to have to go buy it, and then it's going to cost them a lot more money. And this thing came up, well, they'll have to keep the weeds down. Send a gardener out there once a month to cut the weeds. That's not going to cost them that much money. The return, long-term return for them could be a lot better and everything. If they want houses, you know, and, and who came up with the idea in the first place? Who approached who? Did the school board approach the developer, developer approached the school board? You know, that's a good question in there. Where did it come from, and what was the incentives for that and everything? But my feeling is, is the deal was made, leave it alone. There's no reason to change it, at least not in my eyes. And in a lot of the people that I talk to around in our neighborhoods, they're the same way. They said, they make a deal, stay with it. Now, as was said, if they don't like it, build their houses someplace else. This is the deal you made, stick with it. If I made the deal, I'd have to stick with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day. Jan Muzzi for the record. I would like to also speak on this topic. Page 358 of the agenda packet states that the number of students have declined to 530, 5,331 students, which is a decline of approximately 1,000 since 2010. But what is the distribution of that decline? What are the numbers up at the lake versus the number of students that are no longer here in the valley? So I, that would be a pertinent information to have. And what have been the declines since COVID? Currently, there are many students that are being, from the TRE and South County area, that are being bused to Gardner Ville Elementary and bypassing Minelli and Scarselli Elementary Schools, which are much closer to them. Also, there's currently a total of 4,000, over 4,000 homes that have been approved for the valley. And a future school would accommodate students from these additional homes, as well as students from TRE and South County, where there is affordable housing and young families can purchase homes down there. In the May 3, 2023 Record Courier, it was reported, quote, "Last year, school board trustees voted in favor of a plan to trade the site for possible employee housing." As has been already talked about, one could now ask that Virginia Ranch provide designating houses for our sheriffs, fire department personnel, perhaps county employees. This is a slippery slope and is open for divisiveness, of which group is more deserving than another. And as was also stated, potential argument between teachers. That's another form of divisiveness that can happen. The purpose of the school district is to provide education to students. The school district does not have a license to run a lottery of who would get the houses if that's the method that they choose. It is not a landlord nor a property management company. And as I understand that, in discussion here, that a school has to be listed, but perhaps this site would actually be better suited for a fire station or other county facility and possibly include a library branch. I must point out, at one time, a traffic bypass was proposed along the eastern side of the valley. This was a thoughtful design to get truck traffic off 395 through the downtown corridor. Unfortunately, over the years, the various B O C Cs ignored this proposal and chipped away at the property set aside for the bypass, and now it is no longer feasible for a truck bypass. I must remind the board that Mueller Parkway is not designed to take truck traffic, similarly eliminated the 10.5 acre site will soon prove to be a poor decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Muzzi. If you allow the reference to the two, 10.5 acre school site in adopting an amendment to the Virginia Ranch specific plan, the next question might be, what sort of school should be built that would meet the needs of Douglas County school kids and their families? The Douglas County School Board should have demographic information about which neighborhoods in the county are sending children to which schools. For example, families with children that have found affordable housing in Topaz Ranch Estates send their kids on long bus rides every day for school, bypassing schools that seem to be at capacity. A school with the right combination of class levels located at Virginia Ranch could take the burden off of kids and families who live in what would be considered remote areas. It would be a benefit to households with school kids for the county to gather this type of information. Thank you.
James McCallum. I oppose the removal of the 10 and a half acre site. I'm not questioning anyone's integrity or motives here. I believe people are going to do what they say they're going to do. Think the problem is that there's been a lot of development approved in this area. We're talking about at least 4,000 homes. So 4,000 homes, if 10% have one kid, that's 400 students. 400 students is what an elementary school would have. So if we, if we get rid of this school site, it seems to me kind of obvious as we complete these developments that have been approved, we're going to need another school. So it just seems kind of short-sighted to take away 10 and a half acre school site, and then when land costs even more in the future, schools are going to be looking for another site. So let's, let's stop for a minute and consider that what's been done by previous boards in approving development and make sure that we have the facilities and the infrastructure to support that development. Thank you.
Ellie Waller. You've heard a complex and conundrum providing activity today. This was approved in 2004. I'm constantly talking about specific plans being outdated that need to be updated before these kinds of zoning changes come before you. I am not asking you to deny this today because I think the developer has come forward with a solution for a future school that may be built by somebody else to get the teachers here, that we have a revolving door in law enforcement, in, in all kinds of areas where people can't afford to live here. We are a retirement community for the most part. You, you had a beautiful proclamation this morning. We take care of our seniors. I know we also need to take care of the incoming populations. Again, I, I believe that this is somewhat precedent-setting, but the school district also has to purchase this property. It's not being given to them. If they can't afford it at this time, they've provided at this time that this is not a necessary need for them. Again, this is a huge conundrum. I usually come in here with the support, and now I'm on the other side of this because, again, I believe you could have deed-restricted homes, I came from a county that does this, deed-restricted homes that can be dedicated and only for teachers if somebody sells them. Again, I'm going down the rabbit hole. We don't need to be doing this. This is a solution for today to get a property taken care of. I'm, I'm not sure that you look at it from the other side. I try to look at all sides of this process until such time that these thousand homes go in, you know how many people need a school, the school district has determined, again, much like the Vacation Home Advisory Board, they came to you with solutions, and some of those are being thrown out with the bathwater. I believe, did you, any of you listen to the planning commission who approved this? Go to Nevada Rural Funding. I mean, I sat through that process. I tried to come to this table with facts, and you need to listen to how this process evolved. Again, I'm against a specific plan that hasn't been updated, which will need to be. But again, we need to look what is most effective use of this land for this project at this time until such the needs that the school district comes forward and tells you they want it. Thank you.
Jason Gibson, graduate Douglas County High School, 1987. It's a very complex issue. Commend everybody for trying. It's like Ellie said, without a comprehensive strategic overview of what's happening, then we're just spinning our wheels here. We've been recommending that Douglas County take a good look at the big picture. They're kicking and screaming when it comes to the biosphere, noosphere transition, to the whole system holonomic overview of how things stepped down into little Douglas County town. You've got a serious disruption of business as usual. Your quality of life is essentially programmed by commercialism and a belief that time is money. Kids are burned out on what you're teaching them because you're not teaching them the truth. You're giving them a fiction. By the time they turn 28, 29, 30, to find out who they really are, it's too late. They've lost their kids to the system. They're not taught about money. They're not taught about the courts. They don't go on field trips. They don't know the heritage or the history of the state. All you're giving them is an old world order that is absolutely dead, falling flat on its face. So we should probably start with the education base to determine how we should best live because if you're not living in accord to your education or to what you believe, then you're going to have a conflict with that. I think it's a bold endeavor to offer housing. Do we need 3,500 square foot homes? Well, that's the standard in Douglas County, bigger, better, faster, jumbo-sized, everything. What about tiny homes? What about, you know, like a micro-village that's like organized around principles of sustainability? What if like you were being taught how to live and not just how to learn, but how to apply what you're learning within a quality context of life that takes into consideration your peers, your community, other people, the environment? Our ecology is collapsing because of unbridled commercialism. Our, our country is in, in a hot war, and until you get a perspective on what's happening with the pole shift, the Micronova event, and all the big weather and everything that's coming down, then none of this is, is, I mean, we can just continue spinning our wheels. You saw what impact COVID had. If that didn't get your attention about what kind of social engineering is going on, then wait till you see what comes down in the next year or even in the next month. And I know many people in here don't do Facebook, they don't socially network or have a, an open-ended appreciation for YouTube, but that's where you're going to get your real information by which to plan for these kinds of endeavors. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Ms. Hales, my name is Matt Bernard. I, like Mr. Schmidt, am born and raised here, grew up about three houses away, went to Douglas Schools my whole life. Quick background, I started for an engineering firm in 1979. Been to a lot of development hearings, represented a lot of developers, been through this quite a few times. I've never seen, honestly, a developer as gracious as this one in that, struggling to get Mueller Parkway done, I was on the town board, it's one of the highest priorities, I think, in our valley. This developer has offered to build four lanes, as I understand it, on his own dime prior to getting a building permit. This developer did what I believe is statutory, whether or not we have arguments about that requirement. I worked at the firm that did the specific plan. Again, I'm not an expert on all these things, I'll just tell you, I've, I've been watching this, right? And the developer did what I believe he's supposed to do, which is to go to the school district. This isn't the place for the arguments about where the schools are going to be or how many kids. I don't know how many of these people went to the school board when they heard this item, but I presume it was an open meeting, and I presume the agenda was published. So this isn't the place, the school board is in place for a reason, town board's in place. This isn't the place to talk about whether we need more schools. There is a place. It's not here. But the developer, then, it appears, went to the school board, and they said, no, thank you. We don't want, so what, what do you want? Then, he comes here, I believe, I don't represent them, but comes here very graciously to say, look, we've worked it out with the school district, whether you like it or not, or can live with it or not, they've made a deal that eight houses is preferable to 10.5 acres that they don't believe they need. I think we should respect the school board. You have one member who I believe termed out after 12 years on the school board. I would hope that we don't come in so argumentative to miss the point here. The point is if another developer came in front of you today and said, when we're going to do our project, we're going to build and gift eight homes to, you pick your favorite entities, fire, school, police, you pick them, right? We'd be fawning all over them. Who's ever done that before? But somehow, up on that diocese, we can continue to just have negativity. So please look at this a little differently than you are. It's the school district's decision, they made a decision. Thank you.
Maureen Casey, speaking as Chair of the Planning Commission. Commissioners, the planning commission heard this item, and we did discuss the school property. We did have a discussion about the housing element, and when it was made clear that the school district did not own this property, it was still in possession of the develop- the school district did not own this property, it was still in possession of the developer, it was made very clear to us in our discussion that what was in front of us was a simple rezoning of the property. And it was not in our purview, nor the county's purview at all, to really be in the middle of the discussion of the housing element that was being brought before us. That was a discussion between the school board and the developer. And I want to make that clear to you that we did have the discussion, and a suggestion was made to Chris Baker that perhaps he wanted to talk to Nevada Rural Housing at some time with regards to the 10 acres. That was where the discussion should be held, not before the Planning Commission or the county, because it was their private property. I just wanted to make that clarification, that we did have that discussion, and we did pass the rezoning and the other recommendations with a unanimous vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Additional public comment on item number four? Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the board, and I'm going to have some things to say. Number...
Chairman Gardner, if I may, Cape Marolus O'Neil Planning Division. I just want to clarify a couple of things, just comments that I've heard. There is no zoning change in this amendment. This was, is currently zoned as a PD overlay, which is in the staff report. So a PD is another form of zoning. So that is how it is currently zoned right now. This is a specific plan amendment strictly for removal of the 10 and 1/2 acre school property, and then the, adding the street section and the 60-foot wide sections. So respectfully, Commissioner Tarkanian, I, you made a comment regarding staff not presenting it factually, when in essence, that's my job. And I've spent months researching 19 years of documents and trying to keep everybody on the right path here today and not try to go down who's going to live in housing, because that's not our purview in planning. And I have to present you objectively with the facts as far as regards to a specific plan and the amendment and the items contained in it. So I know sometimes it's confusing. It can get confusing to me, but I did just want to clarify the zoning, that the current zoning right now is dictated by the plan development overlay that was approved. It's the PD 06-003. So it's currently zoned that way. That's not going to change with today's decision. It's just removing the school site. So the public facilities is technically remain there, just for clarification.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say that I appreciate the work and the diligence that the Planning Commission put into this, and we always try to take their comments substantially into question. However, this was not a unanimous decision by that board. So I think that's important to point out, is that this was a split decision. So I do know that they spent a tremendous amount of time talking about this particular area. After I listened to public comment, I think, while I appreciate the school board, and I don't like to get into their business, the school board or the school process, but I am troubled by some aspects of this. Number one, I should say that I do not, on a morning, on an every morning basis, I do not need an alarm clock. I don't need an alarm clock. You know why? Because I have school buses coming by my house at 6:00 a.m. to pick up students in TRE to take them to Douglas County schools. The elementary school students down there get on the bus at 6:00 a.m. in the morning. So you can imagine what time that they have to get up in order to accommodate that. They go by three current elementary schools that are already at maximum capacity to get to Mendon Elementary. So I have to be, I have to listen to my residents down there. So I'm fearful that the school board and the school has been a little bit short sighted in this. I also recognize the fact that we have 4,000 homes planned in that corridor right now between this development, which we cannot stop, okay? We need to make that very clear, okay? This project is not subject to the Growth Management Ordinance that limits the amount of allocations or building permits allowed on an annual basis, okay? So the developer could technically, if they wish to, flood the market tomorrow with 1,020 homes, and they know that, okay? Now, they also understand that if they did that, the price of their homes would substantially drop, much to the benefit of our residents, I might say, much to the benefit of our residents. I think our residents, you know, would like to see a lot more homes so that the prices could come down to a more affordable, attainable area. So, but it's probably going to take at the rate of somewhere between 50 and 100 homes, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 20 years to build this out. So I don't know how anybody could speculate on the fact that with 4,000 homes in there, this one being 1,000 that we can't control, the others are regulated by the Growth Management Ordinance, that another school site might be available. So I think it's short sighted, and I know that we're going to get beat up, whatever decision, if we decide not to approve this today, we're going to get beat up by our school district and our school teachers and our school board. But, you know, those are the risks that we have to take, and we can't be short sighted. We are a planning body, a policy body, that needs to look to the future. And whether or not it was built, looked to the future 20 years ago when this was originally anticipated, or the other 25, 30,000 homes that are in that corridor as well, and looking at that, you know, I think we need to look more long range as a board to determine that. So while I appreciate the benevolence of what this developer is trying to do here, you know, you were talking about their offer to build eight homes. I doubt if those are going to be the first eight homes that are built. I would imagine any reasonable developer would probably look at building one home a year for the next eight years or so, once they start breaking ground. That's not going to have any demonstrable impact on luring or keeping teachers in our county. You know, with 300 teachers, approximately a 300 teacher base in our county, I just don't see where that's, and I, and I, once again, I just don't know that we can make that projection, and I don't know how the school district can make that projection that they're not going to need that particular site. So I'm leaning towards just keeping it exactly the way it is currently. I don't know what else I need to add to that. Commissioner Tarkanian, you wanted to...
I just wanted to add a couple of things, and also with respect to the comments that legal counsel had made before we went to public comment. Just go in the order that I wrote down my notes. Planning Commission, it was voted 7 to 2, I believe. The two people that voted against it had a question, 5 to 2. The two people that had voted against it were the people that asked the same questions I did, is where is a legal binding agreement? Are they actually going to build the homes or not? And I think that was a very good question for them. With respect to negativity and listen to the school board, it's not negativity to say, hey, we need to have something legally binding before we give away something of value. I think it would be only common sense would tell you that, and think it would be not prudent to give away the only thing that we can force them to follow through with, the homes. And this was my line of questioning all along, particularly after you saw the letter by their attorney where he basically stated they didn't have a constitutional right to build these homes and don't demand it because you'll lose in court. In fact, the whole letter was a threat to go to court. I think the better approach would have been was to put in a letter like that, something that we wanted to enter an agreement with the school district, which is what we had discussed, we're in the process of doing so, and something more that you were going in that direction. That's not what the letter said to the attorney, which we got a copy of. Factually, I said you went fact, I was trying to be very, very nice because Jennifer Davidson gets mad at me when I attack staff, so I'm trying to be very, very nice. But when you started with the presentation that the school district says they don't need this land and left it at that, you left out the most important part. They said they don't need the land in exchange for the homes, and there's no binding agreement for the homes. So that's where the factual part came in. No, that's true. So to me, I'm not going to take the place of determining what the school board wants or what the superintendent wants. I agree with Commissioner Gardner. I don't see how you can tell 10 years from now where the needs are going to be, but we have a superintendent that is paid to make those decisions, as long as the school board agrees with them. My problem is the current school board hasn't agreed with this. This was done by the previous school board, and you know, you can say, well, that's fine, but there's a different makeup on it now, and they're the ones that are going to be responsible for it. But if the school district said, hey, we want the eight homes instead, and the developer was legally bound to provide those eight homes, I would go along with that. First of all, you're getting something in value. You're getting eight homes, two bedrooms, assuming, you know, they were decent homes, you're looking at $3 million or so, you're getting in value for the 10.5 acres that might sit vacant for 10 or 20 years. So there is something positive with it. Commissioner Gardner made another good point. When are these homes going to be built? So when the legal counsel made some comments about, well, I'm telling you today, we're going to do it so it's legally binding, but we don't have the terms, the conditions, the timing, all things that are needed to have a binding contract. Are the homes going to be built immediately, or if not, how soon? Again, I think it would be nice to know exactly the value of the homes, or at least an estimated value. Hey, I know you say two bedrooms, how big are the bedrooms? This and that. So there's a lot of stuff that we don't know yet before we make this vote. I would hate to, I don't want to, I'm not going to vote for it now because we give up our leverage and we'd have nothing legally binding on them, but I would be in favor of hearing this again if we know more for sure what the school district is going to have and if the school district would prefer that instead of the homes. Thank you.
Is this a good time for me to jump in?
Absolutely.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Tarkanian, and if time allows, I would also be in favor of taking a little time to make sure that we have a legally binding commitment. And it seemed to me like that's where we were going with an offer to write these eight homes into the plan. I feel strongly that I've listened to the school district for years, and I've heard them say what we need is housing for our workforce. They've said it consistently, that the other public entities have said it, and now we have the opportunity to make a little dent in that problem. I don't want to let the opportunity pass by. That is the problem they have. Now, should there be a zoning change? Are the families in TRE, could they be zoned better perhaps? That's a different question. Right now, there's lots of capacity in the schools, and I have no reason to doubt their assessment. I think it's an accurate assessment. It's in line with what's been talked about for years. So it would take a huge change in direction of momentous proportion for us to need another elementary school in the next decade or two. So I want to take them at their word, and their word is we need houses. And for us to substitute our own judgment for theirs is not what I want to do. I want to respect other elected officials in their role and in their judgment. So I strongly feel that whether we need to table this and bring it back in a way that addresses Commissioner Tarkanian's concerns, or whether we could make a conditional approval today, either way, I strongly feel that we need to support this.
Commissioner Rice. Thank you, Commissioner Hales.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me in reading the agenda, we are here to determine three things. Whether or not this school site should be abandoned, a removal of the parcels less than 60-foot requiring rare entry, and a private street section. Now, are those the three things that have been agendized that we're supposed to be addressing?
Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. That's correct. Those, it's not just one issue, there are several issues. However, changes, excuse me, to the specific plan must occur through an ordinance. What could happen, I think the applicant's attorney has indicated a willingness to amend that language, and so the board could continue this item to allow the applicant, at the applicant's request, to make any changes they feel are necessary based on the public comment and the comment of the board.
Thank you, sir. This has been far ranging. We've gone into social aspects. We've done everything except talk about what's on the agenda. The agenda is to adopt ordinance 2023-1615, adopting an amendment to the BRSP and allow for the removal of the school site, removal of the language regarding parcels less than 60 feet that must be rear loaded, and adding a private street section. And if that's what we're here for today, I understand that the social ramifications are far reaching and deep, but I don't think that's what we're here for today. So I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2023-1615 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Hales, to adopt ordinance 2023-1615 as presented. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
An amendment to the motion, no?
Well, you probably should have made the amendment while we were in the motion. Yeah, so...
Someday before I get off the board, I'll figure these rules out.
Excuse me, Commissioners. Relevant to your discussion, as I mentioned earlier, was putting in the eight homes in the specific plan. So you do have some sort of guarantee that it will happen. I've been in communications with the applicant, and if they would confer what I'm about to say is correct. Right. So what is being proposed is that on page 343, which is stricken through, to remove the school site as outlined in the ordinance, would be to keep that language, not strike it, but add a sentence that says alternatively, in exchange for removing the school site, the applicant, the owner of the land and the school district may enter into an agreement to gratuitously give Douglas County School District eight constructed homes for teacherages. And I use that term, teacherages, because that is the language that's used in NRS. This is a concept that's used throughout the country as well as in Nevada. But that is the offer with regards to the applicant in guaranteeing...
Can I ask a question with regards to that?
Well, I was, what I was going to suggest is, you know, as Commissioner Tarkanian indicated earlier, when the, when this original proposal was taken to the previous school board, it was the previous school board, I would like to see this basically go back to the more recent school board and see if they still concur with these decisions that are being made by that body.
I just wanted to ask, I know you're now making it legally binding to build the homes, but can we get some, when we do this, hopefully, you know, assuming the school board approves it, an idea when these homes are going to be built and the type of homes, whatever, so that we, you know, have a little bit more specifics into it? That was what I was going to ask.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Nolesad, you had a question?
Yes, no, I got a statement. With regard to the eight homes being built, I would like to make a friendly amendment to what you said by saying where they would be built. to what you said by saying where they would be built.
So just to clarify, this is, this is the specific plan, right? And I, I think there's some confusion as to where we are in the process. So you have your master plan, and this land is actually, it's Virginia Ranch, it's 1,000 homes, not 4,000, that it's receiving area. It's been designated as receiving area. With regards to that, they did do receiving area over five acres requires a specific plan in Douglas County. They came forward with the specific plan, then there was a PD overlay that changed the zoning with regards to phase one, which is single family and public facility, which included this area we're talking about. In order to make any future changes or talk about where the homes, that would come forward when you change the zoning, which is down the road, and when they come forward with the subdivision map, which is even further down the road with regards to a tentative map. This is the first step.
I have just something, I, I, again, I don't know these rules like you guys do, so I'm just going to throw this out there, if we can do this, you made some type of proposal. Could we agree to, assuming the board does, the two items, two and three, not the 10.5, and then do the, agree to the 10.5 contingent upon the school board approving the relinquishing of the homes and an agreement being reached for the gifting of the other eight homes? So that is now in the school board's hands to vote yes on it and to come to an agreement on, on the eight homes, where they're built, what, the amount they're built and so forth, is, that's something that we can do, and if so, I don't know where the rest of the board stands on it, but that might allow this thing to move forward.
Sure, so with regards to that, the way we tried to structure it was, is that it's an alternative. So if the school board does not enter into an agreement, the 10.5 acre school site remains. So there is going to have to be some sort of decision ultimately by the board, a school board, sorry.
The board says no, the 10.5 acres remain, and then, okay.
I would second a motion if you made one, Commissioner Tarkanian.
Right, and just for purposes of the record, I think it would be important to have the applicant on the record indicate that they agree to that language.
You have a failed motion, but you can make a new.
Again, Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. We have consulted with, with the DA, we agreed to the modified language, and would, would consent to a, a motion if, if so, if one is, is proposed.
Ask legal counsel to restate the motion, and then I can say motion adopted as is or moved as is.
Sure, so it would be move to adopt the ordinance, I don't have the number in front of me. 2023, 1615? Thank you. Move to adopt the ordinance with the modification that the language regarding the school site be left in the plan, not deleted, and that a sentence be added stating alternatively, in exchange for removing the school site, the school district and the landowner will enter into an agreement to gratuitously give the Douglas County School District eight constructed homes for teacherages.
We need a timeframe on when they're going to adopt it, so I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion, how do I say that, that what you just stated, but put a timeframe of, I don't know, they, they meet every, how, how often does the school board meet? And then you got to give.
Right, so an agreement may take longer than just a board meeting.
Exactly, because you're going to need to figure out the type of homes, the, when they're going to be built, and, and so.
Right, and that's why this was drafted in this way, so that if it doesn't come to fruition, the school state will still remain.
We have no downside unless they build the eight homes and the school district approves the eight homes. If the school district doesn't approve the eight homes, we're right back to where we were. If they do approve the eight homes, you know, they're getting something of over $3 million in value, hopefully in a very near future as opposed to 10 years down the line for a school. I think it's a win-win, so, but we got to give some type of a timeline to get this agreement done, so.
I, I would suggest that the parties will have a timeframe motivation, and so I think that we can leave it to them, they're, they're not going to just let it sit there. It seems like the parties are motivated to make this happen, I know the school district is, and it appears to be that the applicant is too. So I, I would, I would move as presented by, as presented by legal counsel.
We're having, we're having discussion on a motion before we have a legal motion on the floor, because we don't have a second yet on that.
Oh, well, I just made the motion.
I know, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hales, seconded by Commissioner.
We're not going to have, okay, then I'm going to vote no, and then we're going to be right back to where we were. Can we have a discussion on the timeframe? I, can I respond?
We can, now that we have a proper motion on the floor, now we can have a discussion on the timeframe.
So my problem, Commissioner Hales, is if I was, and again, I don't know anything about the developer's motive, I don't mean to make, make them look bad, but if I don't, if I can put off on paying for the cost of those homes as long as I can, I'm going to do that, and that benefits them, so they just keep it going, and, and, and there's no timeframe. I think we need some type of timeframe where they got to cut bait, fish or cut bait.
Well, aren't they going to have to?
They're not going to be recognized.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Noah Sad had some questions. We're debating the motion.
The timeframe, time, we're talking about the timeframe. My, my, my take is that unless you provide the spur, the horse ain't going to run. So you need to set a timeframe. Two months, I think, is a lot, is, sounds good, maybe three.
Okay, so Commissioner Noah Sad, are you offering that in the, in the, as an amendment to offer a timeframe of, let's say, 90 days? Can that, Ms. Gregory, could that, could it be accomplished to go to the school board and come back to us within 90 days, or is that too aggressive?
I, I think that's too aggressive, as you know, just from our agreements that we entered into with regards to development agreements and those things, they take a long time. I would suggest a, a year, and if they enter into an agreement, it doesn't have to come back to this board. Once they have the agreement, then what will happen is they'll come forward with, to remove the PF zoning.
Okay, so Commissioner Hales, would you agree with that amendment to, well, I guess we're having debates on a timeframe, Commissioner Noah Sad is suggesting one year then, Commissioner Noah Sad?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second on the amendment?
Second amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, we have an amendment to make that process one year from today, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, now we'll have discussion on the amendment, okay? I just want to make sure we're following the proper procedure here.
Right, and I think the maker of the motion has to agree to the amendment.
Agreed.
Okay, we're good.
All right. I, I have one question. What, let's, let's assume that the agreement is that, yes, we're going to build, we're going to build the eight houses. What happens to the PE parcel?
The public facility zoning. So what will happen is, once an agreement comes forward, the next step will be to have a zoning change, they'll have an amendment to the PD, and then a subdivision map.
So my question now would be, why, why make the change? Why make the zoning change? There's nothing going to be going in there. These eight houses aren't going to go there.
Right, so you would no longer need the public facility zoning. The public facility zoning was put in place in anticipation of the school district, school site.
Let me bring up another point. So we don't build a school now. If we leave it in PE 10 years down the line, while we do fill out all those houses, and now the, the student population grows, what then? If we've already done something else with that property?
Right, that's the chicken and the egg. This agreement was 2004, here we are, 2003, circumstances change. I know there was testimony, at least at the planning commission, that the school district felt that they had enough land with regards to GES and Carson Valley Middle School, that if there was a need to expand, that they could do that. And I believe that Scott McCullough testified to that, and I believe he's here. If he, do you want to confirm that for the board? If you don't mind, just so it's on the record.
Would we still send this back to the school board?
As I understand it, we would not?
No, as drafted, it wouldn't have to go back to the school board until the agreement, right? They would vote on the agreement, not on whether or not they agree with this specific plan, language.
Okay, what, I think more, the reason we're sending it back to the school board is will the school board decide, yes, we need that land for school?
Right, and that's how, I, I think I'm a little bit confused, confusing you. So the language is drafted that it will either stay as the school site, or alternatively, the school district will enter into an agreement for the houses in exchange for the school site. Correct, and nothing has changed.
So Commissioner Noah Sad said we are sending it back to the school board, are we not then?
Ultimately, yes, the school board will have to decide within the year as to whether or not they want the agreement or the school site.
Within a year to decide whether they want the school site or not for a school. Right?
Yes, that's how the language is currently drafted in the specific plan, school site.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and an amendment, could, that could be considered a friendly amendment, basically, so we would need not, need not, need not vote on the amendment? Okay.
So sorry, I want to go as bad as anybody, okay? You got me confused with that, with his question, that last statement. The school board's not going to vote whether or not they want it as a school site, they're going to vote whether or not they agree to have it turned into homes, correct? And if they say yes for homes, then there's no school. If they say no for homes, it stays at the school site. The school board can't say, hey, we don't want the school, therefore give the land back. It would have to come back to the board accounting commissioners for that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, everybody clear where we are? Okay, so all in favor of the motion as, as amended, well, we don't have to say as amended because it was a friendly amendment, okay? So the motion, so, Ms. Gregory, would you please read that again so that we're very clear in our minds and the public also is exactly where we are?
So as I understand the motion that was made and amended, it is to adopt ordinance 2023-1615 with regards to not removing the language, addressing the school site, keeping that language in, however, adding a sentence that says alternatively, in exchange for removing the school site, the landowner and the school district may enter into an agreement within one year, meaning from today's date, we'll say maybe June 1st, 2002, 23 to 2024, enter into an agreement to graciously give the Douglas County School District eight constructed homes for teacherages.
Okay, no questions? Okay, okay.
What, what happens to the other two parts of the, the agenda item?
Right, so if you adopt it, it will include approval of the other two agenda, the other two items within the specific plan.
Thank you.
Okay, since we're all ready to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion passes five to zero. That's where we are. Okay, it's one o'clock, 1:04. We have two important items, three important items, four important items, five important items left on the agenda. Do we want to take a, and I know that we have sheriff's deputies here that wish to be here for the, for the next two items, so should we, should, should we, we take a 10-minute break? Yeah, I know. So should we take a 10-minute break and then come back and attack, attack that?
Yes.
Yep, okay, we're going to take a break until 1:15. Thank you.
Is the adoption of a step system. Currently, we have a merit-based pay-for-performance system where employees receive a 0% to 3% increase based on their rating by their supervisor in that year. With this new step system moving forward, employees will be placed in the step system based on their current rate of pay. They'll receive a 5% increase to place them in the steps. And then, moving forward at their anniversary, they will advance one step until they reach the top, so long as they're able to meet expectations of their supervisor. Some overall summary, high-level information for you is, starting salary for Deputy One on July 1, 2023, will be $59,000 annually, which is an increase of $12,000, almost $13,000, a 28% increase overall. Starting salary for Deputy Two will be $62,000, an increase of $13,500 approximately, again, a 28% increase. And then, finally, Investigators, the Investigator step that you saw, or Investigator classifications, excuse me, that you saw on that first salary, actually, let me back up and I can show you that slide again. Here, you will note, there were two classifications for Investigator, Investigator One and Investigator Two. The proposal eliminates Investigator One and combines all Investigators under one classification. So, the new pay range for Investigators is reflected here on the bottom, and the starting salary for Investigators will now be, moving forward, approximately $70,000. And that results in a $15,000 increase, which is a 28.5% increase overall. The following slides represent a summary of the substantial changes. You'll note, in the packet, there are 21 individual items noted as substantial changes. I'm just pointing out the most significant, those that impact us financially, but I'm happy to go through any of the 21 points if you wish to discuss them in greater detail. This is a two-year agreement, and as I mentioned, it eliminates that Investigator One classification. Again, I mentioned that we're moving from a merit-based system currently to a new step system. The COLA range has been increased from that 0% to 2% COLA that I mentioned previously in the last agreement to a 0% to, and I'm sorry, this is actually a typo, that should say 6%. The COLA will apply to incentive pays moving forward. Step increases and longevity continue after contract expiration. And there is a one-time 3% market-based pay equity adjustment equivalent to one step that will occur on July 1. So, I mentioned deputies will initially be placed in that step, whichever step is, is at least 5% higher over their current rate of pay. If they should have received an evaluation, they will be, that will be factored in, and they'll be placed in their appropriate step accordingly. And then, again, on July 1, they'll receive an additional step to help address that market equity issue. In terms of PERS, this is one of the points that is different from the FactFinder's recommendation. It was not specifically addressed by the FactFinder. However, it is a term that we have tentatively agreed to and subject to your consideration today. The county will, if this agreement is approved, the county would agree to cover the first 2% and then split the balance of PERS between the county and employees moving forward. However, also, in addition to that term, the proposal includes a one-time coverage of the 6% increase on July 1 of this year. Incentive pays across the agreement, where possible, were converted to flat per-pay-period rates. And then, the second term that differs from the FactFinder's findings and recommendations is the lump sum payment. The FactFinder did agree with the county's proposal that a lump sum should be offered in lieu of a retroactive payment, because we're now very close to the current agreement having been expired for nearly a year at this point. So, rather than retroactively adjust backwards the rates of pay for employees because of the logistics of that calculation, what the county is offering is a one-time lump sum payment. At fact-finding, which was done in December, that lump sum calculation was based on a half-a-year of approximate wages, which was $3,000. We are recommending, because we are approaching that year mark, that that amount be increased to 6. Health insurance will now be set based on a percentage instead of a flat rate that we currently pay. That percentage will be 100% employee-only and 75% for dependents or all other portions of the plan, for the high-deductible plan, which is the lowest-cost premium plan. And then, any other plans that the county would offer, we would cover 90% for employee-only and 65% for dependents. This proposal also includes a new component, which is longevity, which would take effect on July 1 of this year. Longevity is based on years of service, and that breakdown is provided here. I'll give you a minute to look at that. The financial impact was mentioned in the reading of this agenda item, but I'll go through it and break it down into fiscal year impacts. So, for fiscal year that we're finishing out currently, the financial impact is just over $1 million. Next fiscal year, the impact is nearly $2.4 million, for a total of $3.451,947 for the combined two fiscal years. The funding is included in the adopted fiscal year current budget. We do have salary savings that we have incurred that will cover the increased, the increases for this fiscal year. And funding has been identified in the tentative budget and will be included in the adopted final budget for next fiscal year. As I mentioned, we are recommending that you approve this agreement. At this point, I would be happy if the chairman agrees it's appropriate to invite the association president forward to speak, if he has any additional comments to add. Justin?
Can I ask one question before we jump to him? When we had our meetings and stuff, we were told, and we saw the maps, where we were now paying more than what Carson City is. But it looked like on your screen, I couldn't tell if you, are you including Washoe Sparks and Clark in that, and that's why we're below it? Okay.
Yes, sir. That's an average of the market for all of the seven entities that I indicated on that spreadsheet. Additionally, before Mr. Frickie has an opportunity to grab a seat, I do just want to personally thank him and the members of his negotiation team and their work on this. It's been tireless. We definitely had opinions along the way, but I'm pleased about the state of relations moving forward and what this means for the county and for the association in terms of things that we can accomplish. I hope they feel supported by this agreement, and I can't strongly recommend it enough.
Thank you. Mr. Frickie.
Justin Frickie, further record. Piggybacking off of what Jen said, thank you, you know. It hasn't been an easy road for the last year, but we came up with a lot of innovative things. We are now meeting with the market average, right there. We've implemented steps, we have longevity. Our starting pay for a deputy when we started this was $21.70 an hour, and we're looking now at $28 an hour. That's a big increase, so that we can start bringing people in and have them stay here. You know, Douglas County is an amazing community. We have an awesome sheriff that supports us. We have you fine gentlemen and Mrs. Charlotte Hales. And we need to have that reciprocating across all the employees as well, so we can provide that service. And I think that this proposal does that. Thank you for the negotiating team from the county, Doug Ritchie, Jen Davison, Cynthia Gregory, Wendy Lang. They did a great job. They came up with a lot of really good ideas that we didn't come up with, and together we figured it out. It was hard to figure out how we were going to make it work, but we finally have, I think. So, you guys have a really good proposal in front of you, and we're excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frickie. I don't know that we need any comments by the commissioners at this time. Okay, so, we'll go to public comment. This is an action item, so at this time, we'll entertain public comment on a two-year labor agreement with Douglas County and the Douglas County Sheriff's Protective Association.
Jason Gibson, House of Gibson. My personal experience, Douglas County Sheriff is an overprotective, racketeering franchise, operates by means of intimidation and fear. The hourly is misrepresented, it's used to mislead the general public. They've got an overkill of personnel. If you're in that jail like I was recently, you've got nine to 13 people there sitting, watching television on the internet most of the time. And your dark transit drivers will tell you that they don't go a single day without seeing a dozen police cars on the road for this little retirement community. They stack up the other counties, claiming that Douglas County is not keeping pace with the others. Well, there's a lot of perks and benefits that these officers get that are not so clear. But my colleagues that are building the pine nuts say that law enforcement retirees on $6,000 to $10,000 a month, and they're buying these homes up like nobody's business, 3,500 square foot to 5,500 square foot homes. And the fire department, they retire on $7,000 to $12,000 a month, and they're laughing their ways to the bank, and all just laughing their way to the bank. We have a personal case at 2023CRE00142 where officers knowingly, willingly, and intentionally falsified citations, police reports, and their testimony. When they don't have enough time, when they have all this time on their hands and not enough crime to police, they make it up. And if you go to call on them to have you to place, say, a report on some vandalism to your house, oftentimes, they're flipping it on you, and they're using the report to profile you or to alienate you from your neighbors. You can't get equality of justice from these people. If they were true peacekeepers, then why do we have such an unprecedented social fabric of violence? Unprecedented social fabric of violence. And I'll tell you why. Because they're not interested in the Peace Plan or the Natural Law Peace Initiative or the New Time Economy in 1933. Because to endorse it and to forward it and to teach it would be the end of fraud as we know it. That's why they're not into the law of time. That's why nothing's going to get fixed, and you're just going to keep throwing more money at it, just like you do. Investigations result in intimidations, obscuring the facts, falsifying reports, falsifying warrants for arrest, unlawfully impounding your property. Let's remember that the two ideal sheriffs that were identified back just two years ago were Bob Songer of Clickatack County and Douglas County, Dan Coverley, as the ideal sheriffs of a nationwide ideal.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hello. My name's Leslie Williamson, and I think most of us would agree that a well-staffed, well-trained sheriff's office is a foundational piece of a successful community. General support for this institution is not in question. The question is calculating the fair compensation to keep and maintain this important asset. That job falls to our commissioners, to you, some of whom express support for our sheriff's office, who press for the photo op with our sheriff, and will say they back the blue, yet in the past have balked at adequately compensating for this vital contribution, leaving our whole community vulnerable due to a disheartened law enforcement workforce and continued attrition. Commissioner Tarkanian, you have a Facebook post from last year's National Police Week, along with a coveted photo with the sheriff, where you speak of the great honor of being there. And here, I quote, "These heroes put it all on the line when they go to work and deserve our support and appreciation." You continue, "I won't back down from here," and this is in all caps, of re, of, "I won't back down," sorry, "of refunding the police, and I'll always hashtag back the blue," exclamation point, close quote. Commissioner, those are fine words, but your words will not keep our men and women from leaving our sheriff's office to join neighboring forces. Your words will not convince them that their decision to risk their lives daily is seen as valuable. Your words won't do it, but your vote can. I and many others in this county are asking you and your fellow commissioners to show with your actions that support and appreciation you spoke of that these men and women deserve. We are asking you to back our blue and to put our money where your mouth is and to refund our sheriff's office. Thank you.
Vote yes. Every, Jim Jackson. I'll get it right one of these times. Every interaction I have had with the sheriff's department, including the sheriff himself, has been very good. Good results, extremely professional, and everybody in our neighborhood has appreciated it, including what the sheriff himself has done a couple of times. So, my recommendation is vote yes. It sounds like a pretty good deal, and it's a good sheriff's department, regardless of what some people say.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Then, we'll bring it back to the board, and I, would you like to offer a motion?
I'll offer a motion, but I want to say something first. I think it's unfortunate that there was a public relations campaign against this current county commissioners with regards to this labor negotiation. When the information put out there was dealing with the prior contract, which was signed, what was it, five years before? So, it was done, it was signed five years before, before, were you on the board? Wes? So, none of us were on the board, and I know three of us were just on two years ago. So, what I, you know, would have been better, and I think more productive, was if this PR campaign discussed what was our initial offer to the, to the police, to the deputies, and then, the public could have decided whether we'd be unreasonable or not. This lady made a nice, passionate comment, quoting things that I had stated, which I've always supported. I think if you knew what our initial offer was, you'd say, wow, that was a pretty good starting offer. You guys really gave a good starting one. In fact, we gave a lot up early, and the, to the credit of the negotiation team for the deputies, they didn't, and they end up getting a really good deal, which we've all agreed upon. And in fact, I think we've all been very supportive of trying to reach a deal where we paid the deputies at least as much, if not more than every county in Nevada except for Clark and Washoe. And I, we've been told that we do. And so, I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract, so that we can support our police force, just like we have in the past. Okay, I want to make a motion to approve a two-year labor agreement between Douglas County and the Douglas County Sheriff's Protective Association as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to approve the two-year labor agreement between Douglas County and the Douglas County Sheriff's Protective Association, DC SPA, from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024, as presented. Since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's an enthusiastic five votes. Yes. Thank you. And we'll go to item number six for possible action discussion, to approve a two-year labor agreement between Douglas County and the Douglas County Sheriff's Protective Association Sergeant's Bargaining Unit, more commonly known as SBU, from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024. A total estimated financial impact of the proposed labor agreement is an increase of $947,745, once again, being presented by Assistant County Manager Jennifer Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As we move on to this agenda item, as a reminder again for context, while we did go to fact-finding on sergeants, we do not have a report from a fact-finder. What I am pleased to report is that the proposal in front of you today is from the sergeant's bargaining unit, and it is consistent, and there is parity between it, between the, what the deputies received, what the fact-finder recommended for the deputies and investigators. The idea behind it is that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. We'd like to see that parity and equity continue moving forward. So, a lot of the terms and conditions that I'm about to go through with you should look very similar to what you just saw. With that in mind, again, we had those same goals in mind as we kicked off our negotiation session. I won't belabor the conversation. I'll move straight to history of compensation. Again, for sergeants, was similar to the deputies with the 0% to 3% merit increases and the 0% to 2% COLAs, and then, the PERS impacting salaries with those two decreases that you saw previously. This is the current salary range for the sergeants. This is what that looks like when compared to the market. Again, we noted going into this negotiation session, both parties, that we had some significant work to do to make up that gap. And I'm pleased to report, we, mission accomplished, we did make up that gap. We are exceeding the market at all points with the sergeant's offer. This is the proposed pay table. Again, we're moving away from that merit-based system to a step system. You'll note in year two that step one does fall away, but there's the new step system for you. Overall, the starting salary for sergeants on July 1, 2023, will be approximately $87,000-88,000, which is an increase of $19,000 or 28%. And the average increase per employee over the course of two years is 24%. Again, substantial changes to the terms of the agreement, consistent with what occurred with the deputies and investigators. We're looking at a two-year contract. The investigator classification, I mentioned it here again, because it does impact this, and I'll explain in just a moment. We converted from a merit-based pay-for-performance system, as I mentioned, to the step system. That COLA, I carried the same typo forward in this presentation, I apologize, that 0% to 2% is changing to a 0% to 6, and will apply to incentive pays moving forward. Step increases and longevity will continue after the contract, and I think I forgot to mention that on the previous slide, that's some new language that's added in. There is a one-time 3% market-based pay equity adjustment for the sergeants as well, which will occur on July 1. And the PERS will be treated the same way, with the 2% covered by the county, the first 2%, and then, the agreement to split the difference after that. And then, additionally, there will be a one-time coverage of the 6% increase on July 1. Again, incentive pays, where possible, were converted to the flat per-pay-period amounts. This is where, a little bit where the two agreements differ, the lump sum was treated a little bit differently for sergeants. The lump sum, again, is offered in lieu of that retroactive compensation. And when we looked at where the deputies on the lower end of the salary range were going to be placed, they were averaging, if they were to be adjusted retroactively, closer to $16,000. And so, it is recommended that deputies placed at, in steps one through four, receive a $16,000 lump sum payment, and then, I'm sorry, sergeants, not deputies. And then, those that are placed at steps five through eight would receive an $8,000, which is equivalent to the average amount that we were seeing when those retro calculations were done. Overall, the average lump sum payment to sergeants will be $11,000 per employee. Health insurance is just as is being offered to the deputies. Longevity is a little bit different, and again, that's based on the higher salary amounts. So, I'll give you a moment to note those. And the financial impact, I noted in the reading of the agenda item that you mentioned the grand total, Mr. Chairman, but the breakdown per fiscal year is here, with approximately $230,000 this fiscal year, $233,000 this fiscal year, and $714,000 for next fiscal year. Again, funding is included in this fiscal year's budget. We do anticipate to cover this through salary savings. And then, additional funding has been identified as part of next fiscal year's budget in the tentative budget process, and then, will be included in the adopted final budget, which is soon to come to you. Again, Mr. Chairman, we are pleased to recommend adoption of this agreement, and at this point, I would turn it over to the association president once more, if he has any additional comments. Mr. Frickie?
Again, Justin Frickie, further record. The lump sum payment that you are seeing is very steep. It has a sticker shock to it. You know, with the retro payment, when we did a lot of the calculations, we had some of our sergeants that were behind close to $18,000. We have some that are less. We were able to figure out a method to come together with two different lump sums, one for step one through four, and another one for five through eight, and that's why they're so different. Our sergeants were really behind, especially in the front end. We've now rose that up to be comparable to other agencies, and that's why you see that they have a higher retro payment, or lump sum payment, I should call it. Again, it's been a struggle, but thank you very much for all the negotiating team and the entire county. You know, even Patrick Kates, I know, has helped us out by being the medium to let us all talk. So, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Sergeant Stork is here to, for some comments as well.
John Stork, for the record, sergeant, speaking on behalf of the SBU unit. Just want to say thank you that, for everyone that was involved in the negotiations process. Been an ex-president for the association, have been through multiple negotiation processes with Mr. Ritchie, and so, this has been a long, drawn-out process, a little different for both sides. I believe both sides wanted to see improvement in police contracts. It's just how we can get there and how we disagree to what that should look like. So, even though this is a more drawn-out process that has been in the past, both sides were able to come together in the end, like we always have, and come to an agreement. All in all, we're not, we are aware that not all wishes could be satisfied on both sides of this negotiations, but the positive aspects that we will take forward in the achievement in this negotiations will help with, with both of our sides moving forward, I believe, in the future. So, again, just want to say thank you to Ms. Davison and her negotiation board. Always, you know, it's been interesting, but even though we still get together and everything works out fine. So, again, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Stork. Okay, if there's no further comments by the commissioners, we'll go to public comment on this item. So, at this time, on item six, we'll entertain public comment for approval of the two-year labor agreement between Douglas County and the Sergeant's Bargaining Unit. Public comment.
Jason Gibson. It's impossible to talk in whole systems without offending people, but we must do what must needs be done. The ideal sheriff was identified by the Trump administration as Dan Coverley of Douglas County and Bob Songer of Clickatack County, Washington. Bob Songer and his boys were knowingly colluding with the Proud Boy Patriots, the Oath Keepers, QAnon, and pro-Trump stumpers, just like this county. We did some investigation and found over 800 agents that worked for Washington County sheriffs were on the Brady List. There is no internal audit system for Douglas County sheriffs, they're all covering each other's backs. If one of them slips and falls, or knowingly, intentionally, and willingly falsifies a police report, or makes an arrest or impounds a vehicle, then the others will cover for them. And that's the name of the game down there. They're all backing each other up, there is no audit system, there is no outside agency to equalize the abuse of authority. These folks are above the law, that's my experience. They're all above the law, they can do whatever they want, nobody's going to stop them, they're going to get as much money as they want, and, you know, if you're, if you're making $60,000 to $90,000 a year, and you're still not happy and you need more, your life sucks. And you're in the right county, because Douglas County is culturally bankrupt. These are commercial, corporate fictitious persons who care nothing else but their own pocketbook, and that's all they really care about. They don't really see ahead into the future, they're not really invested in the ecology or the social fabric or any of these things, and they're not genuinely informed. We have the lowest social IQ probably in the state, and next to Oregon, Nevada historically is one of the most corrupt gold rush states in the country. And it shows. With regards to the recent abduction and impound of my property, both of these officers, when when questioned under oath, could not even respond to the basic question as to how many articles are in the U.S. Constitution, because they're not bound to know the Constitution or apply it. They can't even answer the basic questions when it comes to our corporate contract with They were easily impeached, and if it wasn't for the judge running interference for them, then they would have, I would have had their badges and their bonds. And most of them, if you ask them, they can't tell you much of anything. They're just like stuck on stupid. That's been my personal experience in the forty years that we've been here in Douglas It's a lie. Your corporate charters are a lie. Your peacekeeping association, it's all, your protective association, it's all a lie.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Jim Jackson.
Fourth time's the charm, right? Fourth or fifth time?
I gotta hand it to you. You've got a lot more patience than I would have. Again, it sounds like a good deal. Give the sergeants their pay that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Bring it back to the board. So, Mr. Fricki and Mr. Stork, I am very proud that our county could accomplish these tasks to the benefit and safety of our community and also our officers. So we, once again, thank you for your service. And I don't think that there's ever been a question that we did, we do treasure your safety aspects that you add to our community and your presence in our community. And I certainly hope that your department and Sheriff Coverley understand that, so. Anyways, any other comments or questions by the commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a two-year labor agreement between Douglas County and the Douglas County Sheriff's Protective Association Sergeant's Bargaining Unit as presented.
So, motion by Commissioner Noasad, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to approve the two-year labor agreement between Douglas County and the Douglas County Sheriff's Protective Association Sergeant's Bargaining Unit, SBU, from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024. Since no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Once again, a very enthusiastic aye. Okay, we'll go into item number seven for possible action, discussion regarding direction. Discussion and direction regarding the recruitment and appointment of a new county manager being presented by, and, and once again, thank you for, guys, I know you've been sticking around a long time today. We appreciate your involvement here today. What's Christine's title? Assistant Community or HR Director? So, for, for possible action, and I've stated that already, is it Vito? Vito?
Vito.
Vito, okay. I wasn't sure. Okay. And I was, I don't know your title. I don't know that we've actually ever visited with you, so, or I certainly haven't. So, would, could you tell us your title?
Yes, I'm Christine Vito. I am normally the senior HR analyst for Human Resources, but right now I am the acting Human Resources Director.
Okay. Thank you so much. You're up. So, we tabled the item for a month now, and so I don't know that you have much more to add, other than what's stated here, do you?
Well, there's certainly some, Christine Vito, for the record, there's certainly some options for this board to consider, Mr. Chairman, with regard to recruitment for the county manager position. Just to go over different options for you, this recruitment can happen internally or externally. For an internal recruitment, a posting is open to all current Douglas County employees. And typically, a timeframe for posting an internal recruitment is three to seven days. At that time, HR reviews applications and can go through screening processes as deemed appropriate by this board and bring forward the most qualified candidates for interview. The entire process for an internal recruitment would be weeks, because we already have background checks on all Douglas County employees. The selected candidate would have to go through a refresh of their background screen and to fill in gaps that might be missing in their background file based upon the position, of course, of county manager. If we do, if you do decide to go to an internal recruitment, we can post next week and candidates could be brought forward as soon as the May 18 meeting. Or this board might defer to the June meetings or schedule a special session to discuss this recruitment. The other option for you is an external recruitment, in which we would, if you want Human Resources to conduct the recruitment, we would post externally. Our recommendation is a minimum thirty days to post externally. A typical recruitment is eight to twelve weeks when we go external. That eight to twelve weeks is the full process. It includes job posting, screening applications, interviewing, which may involve multiple steps of screening before final candidates are brought before this board for interviews. And then after interviews are conducted and the candidate is selected, then they would go through the standard Douglas County background screening process. The other option is to go to an external third party, an executive search firm. The county has elected to do this in previous county manager recruitments. You would be, it would be anticipated to spend approximately thirty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars for an external recruitment, depending on the types of services that you would like the recruiters to perform. Human Resources has used CPS HR consulting recently to hire the new library director. That was a difficult position to recruit for, and HR's efforts to recruit weren't successful, so we did go out to a consulting firm. And Peckham and McKennie was used several years ago to hire our CFO. HR has not obtained any quotes at this time. I looked at historical records to give you the approximate dollar amounts, and I would need direction from this board to initiate a search and attaining quotes, and then bring it back to another meeting. The other thing that I would like to bring forward for consideration is during this recruitment process, depending on timing, you may want to appoint an internal county employee to what is in policy 200.11. It's called working above classification pay. It is when an internal employee is selected to perform the duties of a higher classification for a set period of time. The policy allows for a ten percent increase over their current rate of pay to perform these duties. And if those duties do go beyond forty-five days, then the selected person would receive the bottom of the range of the higher pay grade for the duration of their time in that role. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Commissioner Hales, you turned on your microphone. Do you have some questions or?
I do have one question. Yes, just one. If we did an internal recruitment, could we include employees, could employees who are employed by the towns and GIDs be eligible to apply?
Christine Vito, for the record, yes. Town and, the town employees are considered county employees, so they would be eligible to apply for this opportunity. GIDs are not considered county employees, and so they would not be eligible for an internal recruitment.
Okay, thanks. I just want to be clear, it's not that I have a particular person in mind. I just think it might be nice to be open and allow opportunity for, for applying, because that is, you know, a good experience, and I like to be open to internal advancement.
Okay. Commissioner Turcanian?
So I'm a little confused. I thought, talking to our county manager and district attorney before, that we did not have to note, we did not have to post this and open it up and go through all this type of background stuff. Is this a suggestion you're making, or is this a requirement?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Christine Vito, for the record, you do have the authority to appoint somebody and enter into a contract and forego the entire recruitment process. It was my understanding that I was coming forth today to give you options besides that.
You did, thank you. I just was a little confused. So, my feeling is this, we don't need somebody to hire somebody to tell us who we should hire or not hire. I've always felt that was a waste of money. I don't see how you've limited it just to the internal group and not open it up to anybody who wants to apply. And I think anybody can apply, and we can meet with them as, can't we meet individually with them, or do we have to meet them in a public forum? I mean, I think we should open up the process, have anybody who was interested apply. This is a great job. Mr. Kates is leaving the position in a very good state, and I think that it pays well. It's a great community. We opened up, we'd see who wants to apply, and let's make a decision and move on. That's my feeling.
Commissioner Noasad?
Yes. With regard to external, external applications, what's the process for them to apply?
We have a, we have the recruitment that we did back in 2018, Christine Vito, for the record, in which we hired Mr. Kates. We could use that as our starting point. We already have our established county application and supplemental questions. Would you like me to describe that process?
No. What I'm really asking, if Joe Blow wants to apply for this job, does he walk into this building or another building and say, here's my resume?
Christine Vito, for the record, no. They would have to apply through the county's application portal to obtain that, to be considered a candidate for that position. In your packets on page 607 is the current county manager job description. This is what we would use to post a job posting, regardless of it being internal or external. So the first step in this process would be to get feedback from this board to determine if the current job description meets the needs.
Well, my take is, it's been doing a good job ever since, what, 2000, what?
2018.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, sir. It's my opinion that we need to stay in-house. We have the talent. We have the people that have been trained by our county commissioner to take over his position. I, I'm sorry, county manager. And I feel that we would be doing a disservice to our current employees if we went outside. Therefore, I would like to see recruitment, and it sounds like we could bring them back at our next meeting for those employees that wish to apply for the position.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
In that case, that's the way I prefer to go.
The same thing applies for anybody that's not internal.
Christine Vito, for the record, no, sir, that's not correct. If we go external, Human Resources recommendation would be to post for a minimum of thirty days. In order for us, if you, if this board does decide to go internal, HR recommends doing a three-day internal posting. That way, it gives Human Resources an appropriate amount of time to vet the applications, provide proper notice to the candidates that they will be coming into open meeting, and their character will be discussed. And that would, we can make that happen by the 18th.
Okay. I, I concur with Commissioner Rice that we, I feel like we should explore our internal opportunities first, and then if we find that those candidates do not reach what we need, then, then we could go to the alternative. But that's my personal feeling right now. I do, I do understand that one of the previous individuals indicated is going to be on personal leave, as I understand it, on the 18th. So, but that wouldn't preclude us, if we, if we did determine today to go to internal recruitment and determine a number of days that we would have that period open, that would not preclude this board from having a special meeting that would accommodate all the candidates, possibly. Is that right? We don't have to do it in a, in a regularly-called Board of Commissioners meeting, is that?
Christine Vito, for the record, that is correct. You can call a special meeting, and that would allow more time for vetting the applications and getting the proper releases signed, and it would be a dedicated meeting specifically for the interviews.
Something that troubled me during the last process that we encountered back in 2019, I believe it was, when we did do external recruitment, number one, that was an exhaustive process and a lengthy process, but then, can you tell me about the processes? Because the board went ahead and approved an individual to, to enter into contract, but then subsequently, then they had to go through the background process, and, and then that individual wound up withdrawing after a week. And certainly, we don't, I thought that was really awkward, okay? Can you tell us about that process and why we go through that process?
I can't get into specific details about background checks, but what happened in that process is the board had decided to bring that individual on before the background process started. So what our normal county process is, is we extend an offer to an individual, they sign an offer letter, and at that point, we initiate background check. And in an external recruitment, we do not hire and bring an employee on until their full background is clear. In the case, so that would be the same, my recommendation, if you do decide to do an external recruitment, is, it does take time, but if you wait for the full background to be cleared, then, you know, onboarding the new county manager is fairly straightforward. Just to talk about doing an internal recruitment for a moment, I did make a comment that we already have background checks completed for all county employees, and they're housed in Human Resources. When an employee internally promotes to a higher position, we review and refresh that background check. So we make sure that, you know, criminal history is updated and that there isn't anything of concern. If the position requires driving, we get an updated driving record. This position has a requirement for a college degree if a candidate lists college education, and that's one of the bases of them meeting the minimum qualifications of the job. We will require proof of their education by requesting transcripts. Also, if the position handles money or has, you know, fiduciary responsibilities for Douglas County, we do require a credit check. And all of those would be required of an internal candidate to make sure that their background is also, good.
Commissioner Hales, you had some questions in that regard?
No, I was just going to weigh in. I, I wanted to state that I am also in favor of an internal recruitment, and my reasons are this, I'm anxious to get started on a strategic plan, and we have other works that are underway. The VHR thing, that the Title 20, these are big concerns that if someone comes in from outside would take. outside would take extensive homework to get up to speed on. And, and if we didn't have qualified candidates, that, then, okay, but we do. And so for now, I would have an internal recruitment.
Okay. Commissioner Noesad, you had?
Yes. I think we're, if we focused on internal only, we're limiting ourselves. There are people out there in, in the business world who are willing to come and apply for these jobs, or this job. So I think we should stick with, we should go with all three possibilities for recruitment. And then at the, for instance, if we get an application here in the next week or so, we go out 30 days past that, we'll have satisfied what you needed to know about that particular candidate, and then we can make a decision.
Okay. Since no further discussion, we'll go to public comment on this. Is there a public comment here in chambers?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Ainsworth, I echo Commissioner Hales, Rice, and Gardner's feelings. I think we have qualified candidates on staff right now, so I see no need for an external recruitment, and personally, not even a recruitment inside. I think our Assistant County Manager has all the skills and the knowledge, facilitation skills and leadership skills that you would ever need. She's got all the background knowledge for what's going on in the county. She's headed up major efforts here in the county. So I would suggest that you probably have to go through an internal procedure of some sort, but I, so do that and then waste no time in selecting Jennifer Davidson. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Driscoll. I've lived in the county for 40 years, more than 40 years. In the first 15 of those years, I was the East Fork Fire Chief. I've seen many, many Commissioners and county managers come and go. We do not need to go outside for recruitment. We have an Assistant County Manager who's done a great job. I sit on the Menden Town Board and she came in and took over the town amended, straightened a lot of things out. She recruited J.D. So based on her experience with the town amended and her experience here in the Douglas County, I think she is your best option. Additionally, she has a lot of institutional experience and knowledge rather than having to go outside and train a stranger. I've seen that fail a number of times. And last, I'd like to suggest that you include the towns in the selection process because the county manager has a big influence over each of the towns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
James McAllope, I also agree with an internal search. I think you have to start internally because of continuity. I would join those that agree that our Assistant County Manager would be a great candidate. I think you start internally. For some reason, that didn't work, you can always open it up. I think you start, we start with what you have because that keeps things going. It's the continuity, I think, that'll help the county and serve all of us. Thank you.
Ellie Waller, you have lots of options. It sounds like there are some people here that may agree with appointment might work for Ms. Davidson. I think that she is a wonderful candidate. I think that the process should be opened up internally for other people to have clarity. I've watched in the past, the TRPA appoints somebody without allowing other internal employees apply for the executive director position. This past year, or this past time, they went externally, but that doesn't apply here. I think that three days is a little limiting. I think it needs to be for a week. There are people on vacation, some people sick, some people don't get notified. It's a very strange process that doesn't happen very often, so I think a seven-day period. And during that time, if Mr. Cates is really ready to go now, Ms. Davidson could be here as the interim county manager. I think you have a broader spectrum than just saying internally, "Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, Assistant County Manager, for the record. I did hear my leave being referenced, and I just wanted to put on the record that I am interested in applying for the position and do intend to apply. I would ask that you consider that I will be out of town from May 17th through the 23rd. I will be attending my master's degree graduation ceremony in Washington, D.C. If it wasn't such a monumental, personal event for myself, I would not be taking this time. But I'm very grateful that, for that opportunity to celebrate the achievement of my master's degree, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. Further public comment? Since none, we'll bring it back to the board. I had a question. If we determined that we wanted to go internal, that's still a decision we need to make, and we posted it, say, for seven days, that would be next Thursday versus perhaps maybe making it until next Friday. But if we did that, it would be extremely difficult to get that on an agenda for the 18th anyways. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Cates? So we would have to probably push it back anyways to some other date after the 23rd, regardless, unless we brought it forward on June 1st. So anyways, I just wanted to kind of give that timetable to the Commissioners before we made any decisions here, so. Anyways, any further comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we do an internal solicitation for people to apply for this position and that it come back before this board for determination on June 1st.
Do I have a second to that? Looks like Commissioner Hales is looking at her calendar.
Exactly. Yes, I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that process? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. So the thing I'd indicate is that we did not post a, we did not give HR an indication of what date that would be posted for. Do you wish to, you said come back to us on June 1st, but is there a timeframe for folks to submit applications?
I believe that they suggested it was a two-week period and that we could come back. We could have come back on June the 18th, but that looks like it's not going to be working for everybody. So that's why I'm suggesting a two-week period and then bring it back here on June 1st.
As I look at the calendar, I don't think that'll work in regards to posting of agendas, if I'm not mistaken. So if we open that up for an additional week through next Friday, then, then we could have it on an agenda for June 1st. Is that, am I looking at the dates correctly? Mr. Ritchie? Posting requirements for agendas. June 1st has to be posted by?
1:00.
So that, that puts us in a little bit of a timeframe. So would you be entertaining a, a motion to amend that to a next Friday? What's that, what's that date? Next Friday, the 19th? Is that, no, next Friday is the 12th. Would you be, would you be good with that?
Would that give you enough time to do what needs to be done?
Christine Vito, for the record, yes, it would.
Thank you. In that case, I make that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to do internal recruiting with an open date of the close of business on May the 12th, and then to come back to us on the agenda for June the 1st. Is that, am I stating that correct? Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Yes. I think by limiting us into the only the internals, we are bypassing the golden possibilities of someone who comes up that turns out to be much more qualified for the job. So I, I'm going to vote no on this one.
Any further discussion? So, okay. All those in favor, sing it by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
I'd like to state on the record my reasons.
Yes, but let me announce the vote.
Okay.
Motion passes three to two with Commissioner Turkianian and Noesad declining, or dissenting. So Commissioner Turkianian?
First of all, I'm going to start off by saying I think we've got some really great workers that, employees that are here in the county. In fact, I stated that in one of my newsletters just before the first of the year. So this has nothing to do with that. But I think we're making a big mistake when you don't open it up to anybody who wants to apply, including people outside the county's office or the GIDs that you're mentioning. And the reason I say that is, there's already a strong perception out there that this county is, doesn't operate openly, that things are being done behind closed doors, that there's a goody-goody relationship that goes on. Why give them more ammunition to feel that way by eliminating anybody outside of this group? You're going to have the same three votes for the, when you pick the person. I believe we would have made a much better presentation to the county if we'd given everybody the opportunity to apply, to meet with the Commissioners, and to give their, what they feel the future of their county can be with them at the helm. And furthermore, I don't know for sure because I haven't dealt with enough of it, but with my mother on the city council for 14 years in Las Vegas, going through two different county managers, watching what the County of Clark and Henderson, I've never seen a, unless it was a direct appointment of one person individually, I've never seen an appointment of a county manager that wasn't open to the general public and was only done by internal forces. So I think this, this really looks poorly upon the county. I think it's the wrong decision and that's why I'm voting no.
Thank you. Okay. I believe that we have direction. Gregory?
Thank you. Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. I am here because I am counsel for HR. And just, if you could provide a little bit more clarification with regards to when this comes back in front of you on June 1st, would you like all candidates to come forward regardless of qualifications? Or would you like HR to only bring forward those candidates that meet the qualifications in the job? Additionally, would you like HR to prepare questions? Or would you just like to have a back and forth between the board? And then also, would in that, on that same agenda, would you request just alternatively an item for appointment of an interim if, for some reason, you don't appoint someone on that day? We're just looking for a little bit of direction so we make sure you can do what you want to do on June 1st.
I, I can personally say that I don't know that we need to reduce our qualifications for that position regardless of whether we were doing it internally or externally. So my, that's, that's my feelings that we should post these qualifications or requirements to our, to our internal employees so that they have a clear understanding of exactly what we're looking for. That's, that's my attitude, but.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that we should only be brought the names of those that qualify. There's no, there's no sense in putting those that don't qualify through the process.
Commissioner Turkianian, anything to add? Commissioner Noesad?
Well, let's see. What's the bar for getting qualified? How many of these bullet points in this resume or is this job description, do you have to pass? All of them? 50%? 75?
Christine Vito, for the record, if you turn to page 607 in your packets where the job description is, human resources will screen applications to meet the minimum qualifications of this position. Starting on page 608 is the education and experience requirements as stated on the current job description. It's a bachelor's degree, preferably in public administration or a related field, master's degree in public administration preferred, and eight years, I'm sorry, a minimum of eight years management experience leading a diverse organization, preferably in the public sector, or equivalent combination of experience and education. So we do look at the equivalency. So somebody could have a master's degree and less years' experience working in this capacity and meet the minimum qualifications. Conversely, somebody could have less than a bachelor's degree and a whole career's worth of experience and meet the minimum qualifications of this position.
Okay. I have a candidate in mind who fits every one of those things that you've just mentioned. But he's going to be eliminated because he's an external. You're passing up an opportunity.
So any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Hales?
I appreciate that explanation and I think, yes, bring only qualified candidates.
Who apply?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think HR has direction from us as how we wish to proceed as a board, right? So any other questions you might, you folks might have?
Just some further direction when we do bring the candidates forward. Do you want to have HR provide a set of questions to ask? Or would you like the, to have the ability to ask questions or a combination thereof?
Once again, I need, but.
I think that HR can provide us with some basic questions, but I think that when we interview our candidates, that we should be free to ask whatever questions we wish.
I concur. It might be wise to give us a little bit of guidance to make sure that we ask only legal and appropriate questions.
Good observation. Yes. Okay. Okay. So we're done with item number seven then. I appreciate your, and, and anyways, thank, I thought it was a very well-presented item even though we haven't visited with you before, so anyways, appreciate your attendance today. So item number eight, for presentation only, presentation and discussion regarding the 2223 session of the Nevada Legislature, including an overview of legislation that may impact Douglas County, being presented by our county manager, Patrick Cates. So where are we?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to keep my comments very brief, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to speak from the dial. you, I'd like to speak from the dais. Okay. So since our last meeting, there hasn't been a lot of movement on the bills on our tracking list. The tracking list is on page 612 of your packet. Since our last meeting, the deadline passed April 25th last week for bills to pass out of the first House. So they haven't had a lot of, I think there's been like one hearing on one of our bills so far. So there really hasn't been a lot of movement there. The next deadline coming up is May 19th. That is the deadline to pass a bill out of the Committee of the Second House. The only real activity of note that we've had since our last meeting is China Spring Budget, the State Division of Child and Family Services Budget, Youth Alternative Placement, had a hearing on the 25th. That includes funding for China Spring. That budget was partially closed. The Committee noted, and I had just become aware of this fairly recently, that the adjustments that were made in the Governor's Budget did not fully restore China Spring funding. There was a shortfall of about $400,000 per year. I'm not sure with all the eyes are on it why that wasn't obvious to me and others earlier, but nevertheless, the Committee Chairman noted that and asked staff to go back and find the funds to add those additional monies. So I believe that they're going to take action to add additional state appropriations to make up that shortfall which would make China Spring whole. That has not occurred yet, but we're keeping a watchful eye on that. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
So are there any, I just quickly had, is there anything that affects Douglas County that we should be aware of one way or the other, positive or negative? No? No. Okay. Commissioner Hales, do you have any questions for Mr. Cates?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Turkanian, Noah Sad, Rice? Okay. I guess that gets us there. So and that's a presentation only item, so there's no public comment required. We'll go into the last presentation item, Presentation Only Item 9, Announcements, Reports, Updates from County Commission Members, including updates on the various Boards and/or Commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to, or meetings, functions they have attended, and any requests by a Commissioner for discussion of a future Board item. Commissioner Hales, anything to share with us today?
I'll save mine for next time and I'll just comment that I appreciate you accommodating me being out of town and that I can still participate. So thank you all.
I think the battery vice statutes guarantees that, so.
Nonetheless, I appreciate it. I know it's not quite as good.
Okay. Commissioner Turkanian, anything to add? Commissioner Noah Sad? Commissioner Rice?
I attended a toll transportation district implementation committee meeting yesterday and one of the things that we're looking to accomplish is to try to mesh all of the different transportation facilities around the lake. We have numerous ones and the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing and hopefully we can coordinate the efforts so that we can make a seamless system. It isn't going to be easy and it's not going to be quick, but we envision the day when people can go from our senior center all the way up to Emerald Bay or go to their doctor. We now are going to be having a new hospital on the Nevada side, its state line, and the microtransit will be able to bring people from the valley to that hospital should their doctor be at that location as well as into Carson City and into Washoe County is the future plan. So it's going to take a while, it's going to take a whole lot of cross-the-nation and a whole lot of concentration, but I think that in the future, we can get it all done. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only thing I would report is that, Mr. Cates, I really appreciate you keeping item eight short. I participate in these meetings, I participate in the NACO meetings, I participate in Carson Water Subconservancy meetings, all going over the legislative things. I attend the various women's organizations and the county Republican information. So I listened to all these items multiple times. It's interesting to get different takes on them. But anyways, I appreciate you keeping your report short because we're diving deep into the day here without a meal. So anyways, and I appreciate everybody's indulgence of that process as well, including certainly the Commissioners. So that's all I have to report. At this time, we'll go to closing public comment. Is there any closing public comment here?
I attended two of the Legislative Committee meetings of the Natural Resources and provided public comment and testimony. I know that SB 213, where the Visitors Bureau went forward asking for our entire TOT, was put into a dead letter file as reported by County Manager Kate. I don't think this should just die. I believe that I would like to know and many in the public who went to Senator Flores and asked for this to happen. Some accountability needs to be held to the shameful act. Thank you.
Got it right. This has been an interesting session. I'm still rather confused on what we actually did with the school zone up there, the property. Hope it all works out to the best part for the county and everything, but when I see lawyers patting themselves on the back and smiling, I get a little nervous and that's exactly what they were doing over here and stuff. But anyway, I've got to hand it to you. You do have a lot of patience with some of the people that get up here and speak to you. Like I mentioned earlier, I wouldn't have that patience. One of the things that a lot of people in our community have been asking, and I've spoke to some people about it, is newsletters. One from each of you would be great. We get Commissioner Turkanian's newsletter, but we'd also like to see other viewpoints on things that have gone on here. That gives us more of a rounded view of what's happening in the county and it lets us have more input as to when we come down here, what we can speak about and what's coming up and what's happening. I think that would be a very good idea. I know asking each one of you to put a newsletter out is a bit much, but it would be helpful to the people in general. We find them very useful. We don't always believe everything we read, but at least it's a viewpoint that we can take and that we can discuss and we can talk about. And if we have real questions, we can give you a call and say, okay, what do you really are saying here? So it'd be very helpful if that would come about. And other than that, thank you very much for your time. I would not want to apply for this job. When I interviewed with Walt Disney Productions, I was put through the grinder there, but I think coming up here in a public forum, having you guys ask questions, not a way. There's no chance I'd want to do that. Because I was here when you did it and I saw that process and no, thank you. But anyway, thanks.
Mr. Jackson, are you saying there's another viewpoint besides mine?
Yes.
I'm just getting a little confused. And then you're also saying that you don't trust everything I write?
No, I didn't say I didn't trust everything you write. I said I don't always believe everything.
Believe everything I write.
Well, I didn't know that we were going to get personal here, you know?
You asked me.
It's entertaining every time Congressman Amade talks. He opens the floor for personal attacks, so. Commissioner Noah Sad, you had something that you wished to add?
I just want to, if we all, each of us put out a newsletter, is there any exposure to meeting law there?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. That's a great question. A pre-meeting newsletter could easily run into problems, but a post wrap meeting bulletin wouldn't pose any problems.
But I think what the gentleman was asking for was information before the meeting.
Well?
Actually, what we want to know is after you voted on stuff, why? You know, it gives us a better insight into why did you do what you did.
And I state that, don't I?
You do. But other ones vote for other reasons. No, it's just, we would like to see reasonings behind your votes. It gives us a better insight as to what's actually going on.
Well, Chairman, if I may.
So you also have access to our phone numbers. So. Okay. Mr. Ritchie?
Chairman, if I may. I would hope that none of you have decided how you're going to vote before the meeting and public comment has occurred. So that should solve that problem.
So Commissioner Hales, we appreciate your attendance today, even if it is from a remote location and look forward to your attendance. I believe you're going to be back by May 18th, right?
I will.
Okay. Very good. Okay. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.